Welcome, everybody, to our annual planning retreat dated March twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two. At this time, we'll be, we'll bring our meeting to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag from the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, all nation under indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with the regular agenda. I don't think, do we need to approve this tonight? Okay. And we'll start with the Police Department update. That's item three A. Mr. Krueger, you want to take us down that road?
Yeah, I'll just give a brief introduction. We have Police Chief Aaron Tiki here. He's going to talk about the police camera technology that we have in both our body cams and our squads. And he's going to talk about our Lexi Poll policy program, which he's implementing right now. That'll take a little bit of time, but yeah, he'll just come up and talk at the podium and go over a couple of things and pull a few things up on the screen. So I'm coming up.
Like so. And then. So then, yep, I got it. All right. So, yeah, thanks Administrator Krueger. I just wanted to give an update here about our new camera systems that we recently had installed in January of this year. So we got our body cameras back in, I think, April of two thousand and nineteen. And when we purchased those, we went with Axon with the forethought that Axon also offered a fleet system, meaning cameras that are in your cars that all communicate and correlate and talk to each other between the body cameras, the dash cameras, the backseat cameras. And then all that data is able to be managed and stored on this program that you see here in front of you, that's evidence.com, which is a cloud-based storage system. So this is a system that, you know, obviously it costs. I think it's like thirteen thousand and a few dollars more than that upfront when we purchased that system with an annual subscription fee to maintain and manage our data. So previous to that, our, to these fleet cameras being installed in our cars, we had mobile vision cameras in the cars. And that data was stored on an independent server that was located at, and is still located at our police department, but that server is becoming outdated and probably was going to need to be replaced. And it was a cumbersome way to deal with the data because that DVR would, or server would want to rewrite the data every sixty days. So if there was something that we needed to keep longer than that, we were having to burn CD files and then keep those physical CD files filed with the cases. And then it was also cumbersome to get that data to where it needed to be for like prosecution. So if we had to share video data with prosecuting authorities, or that's the county attorney, the city attorney, we had to burn CDs and then physically take those CDs to those prosecutors so they had them in their possession for prosecution. Now with this system, we can send video links via secure email, and they're able to access the data through that secure email link. So we don't no longer have to burn CDs, transport CDs, things like that. So I just kind of want to give you an overview of what this looks like. So. Well, we'll go to my evidence. So when we create a file in evidence.com, so if we're out on a call and we utilize our camera system, which we do on pretty much every call that we go on, we're then able to go in and categorize and label all the data on the mobile laptop computers that we have in our squad cars. So like you can see here, this incident, these are three videos that all correlate with each other. This is from an incident that took place at the location of Fourth and Bridge Street. This is the ICR number here that links them all together. And then it shows the user that created that data, which is myself. And then over here, we can select a retention category. I think there's like sixteen different categories that we can select that, and each category is assigned its own retention schedule based on the Minnesota data practices retention schedule. So if it's a general contact, I think we keep that for one hundred and eighty days. If it's an arrest, that's always on file for seven years. If it's a use of force, it's kept on file for, I think, seven years. If it's a traffic stop citation, we keep that for three years. So each category has its own retention schedule that we utilize, and that helps us maintain the inappropriate level of data within the system. And it also helps us search and locate certain videos when we need to. So I made a video specifically, specifically for this, just so I could show you guys how the system works. So we can go into each individual file, and I can go into multi cam mode. And I'm able to watch all three videos simultaneously by selecting them. Okay, come on. Oh, isn't selecting. I don't know, it doesn't want to work. Oh, give me a second. These two. Working earlier, you can come in here and test it. All right. So if I launch multi cam, I can watch these two videos simultaneously. So when we use these cameras, they're on a buffer mode. So the cameras are always recording, and anytime we activate them, the previous thirty seconds of video prior to us activating the camera is captured on the cameras recording. So just the video, not the audio. And then the audio is activated when we activate the camera. So you'll see at thirty seconds time here when this hits the thirty, the audio will kick on, and you'll be able to hear me.
All right, this is an example video, just to show our new Axon Fleet Body Camera System. There are different triggers that activate these cameras. They come out automatically anytime our emergency lights are activated. They also come on anytime we drive over ninety miles an hour. Anytime we would release our shotgun in a squad car here by pushing this button and taking our shotgun out. The cameras are automatically activated. They are also automatically activated if we were to be involved in motor vehicle action. You can see this is the view from the dash camera, simulating that we were doing a traffic stop on this car. There was some type of action out in front of the car. We capture all that on video as well as audio recording through the body camera that we opened up. And all these cameras, they're all correlated and communicate with each other so that I'm using the audio recording for my body camera. That's also using the camera from the dash cam and the squad camera and capturing video from my body camera at the same time. Also capturing video in the backseat of the squad car if we had someone seated in there. So you can see what's great about this system is it captures the big picture from the dash camera of what's going on. Wherever we are interacting with someone, we can try to position our squads like cameras facing whatever the situation that we're dealing with is. And then also the close and personal camera from our body camera that can show, you know, if we're going to interact with someone inside this motor vehicle, it's obviously going to record whatever they're saying, whatever their reaction is to us. It's also going to capture, you know, video evidence of what's going on inside of the vehicle or on the vehicle or wherever we are interacting with someone, you know, and it's great to have that evidence because if we had a driver in the vehicle, that was, let's just give an example of those. They can capturing all their bloodshot watery eyes, their slurp speech, their, their motor movements that might be disrupted, slowed, sped up. They're fumbling around with the driver's license, et cetera, things like that. So that's what's so great about having all these videos integrated with each other, and we can watch it all back in real time on evidence.com and submit those videos or recordings for prosecutorial purposes. It creates great evidence for us to utilize in prosecutions and in our cases. And then just for example, if we had someone in the back.
Pause this and get the backseat camera. Pull up here. Let's play it this way, I guess. Of course, I came in and tested it earlier and it was working.
So is there ever a time that you have to activate those cameras? You know, by yourself, or it sounds like a lot of times they just kick on with the right situation.
Yeah, so there's different, like I said in the video, there's different triggers that will turn the cameras on. So there is times when we just manually turn them on just by tapping the switch here, and that manually turns the cameras on.
Like, like with a domestic situation, you pull up there with lights on, or do you pull up there?
Typically, to a domestic situation, we try to, you know, turn our lights off a couple of blocks ahead of time. So that our approach is more tactical and sound.
So then you'd have to activate it by hand then.
Well, if you drove code, you know, close to the residence, then obviously the cameras are on anytime we're doing a code three response in our squad cars with lights and sirens, or even just lights. The camera's going to be on as we're driving and navigating our way to the call. So they probably would be activated already. But yeah, anytime, let's say, you know, you go to the school and we don't, we go to school or say the hospital where there's maybe some privacy issues where we would wait to activate our cameras until we are interacting with the specific data subject that we're there to interact with. That way, we're not capturing other students that aren't involved in the incident or other patients that might be involved in incident. We try to only capture the data that's necessary to be captured for our needs.
When the, this data is used for evidence, things are redacted. There we have redaction software that we can block out people's faces and other private, private information too. So. So that's helpful.
Well, yeah, so, well, in a nutshell, that's, that's what the system looks like, and I don't want to click around here and waste your time. That's fine. It just goes on to show what the video in the backseat looks like, which is just the video of a backseat. So anytime we transport a prisoner or give a ride to someone, anytime someone is in our squad car, we have that on video, and that's valuable. Our previous squad car cameras did not have a backseat video. And obviously, we have issues with people hiding drugs in our backseat if they're in there that they don't want us to hide or self-injurious behavior that they sometimes would then turn around and try to blame on the arresting police officers or even just, just straight up self-injurious behavior. But that's all captured on video now, and it just helps us, you know, obviously show with an unbiased camera view what happened in any given situation. So both for evidentiary purposes for prosecutions and also just as a liability protection for us as a police department to make sure that, you know, we're following policy. Our officers are acting appropriately and professionally. And then when complaints are generated, we can investigate those complaints and find out exactly what happened and move on from there.
Is there, is there any time where an officer could override that system and have it shut off?
No, so there are different security, they can shut the cameras off. There are. They do have the ability to shut the camera off, but then there would be questions with our policy about why that camera was shut off. And we'd have to have the answer, the officers would have to answer to, this is why I shut my camera off. And there is some discretion within our policy to allow them to shut the cameras off. Typically, though, that's not allowed when they're having interactions with the general public. And most, most interactions with the general public, the policy states they should have the camera on unless there's, you know, privacy reasons for it not being on like a medical type call or medical type emergency. Or, you know, they're allowed to, if they have contact with people, and then the two officers need to step back and have a sidebar to confer about, you know, their next tactical decision or their next move they're going to make, they can shut the cameras off or mute the cameras in order to have that conversation with each other in confidence. And then turn the cameras back on when they reengage someone. But for the most part, whatever they're interacting with the public, the policy mandates that they have those cameras on to capture that interaction. Yeah. Any other questions about the cameras? All right, and then.
One, one thing, how, how long do you have to keep this data? Like, how long are we required to? I think it's based on what type of category you put in.
It depends on, on the category that it's in. So just general contact, so like, let's say, you know, an officer has a contact with someone walking down the street and they stop them and just kind of have a general conversation and maybe identify who that person is, and they recorded that on body camera. That would be labeled as a general contact. And general contacts are held for one hundred and eighty days. Any traffic stop, that's a non-citation traffic stop that's held for one hundred and eighty days. All arrests are seven years, I believe. All use of force incidents are seven years. You can go in, so like if we had, you know, for example, we had a serious use of force incident where there was serious bodily injury, we can go in and change that retention category to specific incidents so that that video was permanently kept in the evidence.com system. So we can override how long it's kept and make that kept for a longer period of time. There are security settings within that evidence.com system so that all the officers only have access to their own videos, and they can only view their own videos. They don't have the ability to edit or redact anything. The only person that has the ability to redact anything would be our administrative assistant, Jennifer Cummins. She has the ability to redact on things, and by redact, that as she could blur out a face, she could mute a voice, things like that. And that would be used if we had a public information request for a specific video. If there are multiple data subjects in that video and only one person is making the request for that body camera video, but they don't have permission from the other data subjects that are captured in that video, those other data subjects would be redacted, their faces would be blurred out, their voices would be muted. And only the person making the public request or only the people that have given permission for their data to be released would be not redacted in that video. If that makes any sense. Any other questions about the body worn camera or fleet camera systems? Not.
Aaron, I have one other quick question.
Sure.
How does this relate if you call in the sheriff or another jurisdiction? Do they have similar data systems? And can you, can you relate to each other in some way through?
So the sheriff's office, I think they have a system called WatchGuard, and I know they only currently have in-car cameras. And I honestly, I can't speak to what their policy and procedure on because they're a separate entity, and then they probably govern it how they see fit, which is appropriate. So our systems don't communicate with their systems, unfortunately. You know, that's kind of one of those timing things where, you know, they were, felt it appropriate to go to the system they felt at that time, and it works for their agency. We had already went with Axon for our body cameras, so we felt that was meeting our needs, and it's the direction we went. It's just kind of a timing issue as to why. So, you know, one agency goes with one thing, and another agency goes with another program. But so typically, like if we're working with the sheriff's office on a scene and a deputy would come up and say, assist me on a domestic, I would just inform him, just so you know, my body camera is active right now. You know, or they would do the same, just so you know, my dash camera is active right now, just so each officer knew that they were being recorded is typically how we handle a situation like that.
Thanks.
That's a great question, Dool, and I'd like to expand on that, Aaron, if I could. What about like say Minneapolis officers or other cities? They all pretty much have the same.
Um. Yeah, I would say the, the, the leading brand or the leading system that most agencies have is Axon. It's probably the one of the most popular systems, but it's not the only system. And, and the reason we felt like it was the best was because we really liked the use of evidence.com for our data retention. It's really easy to manage. It's really easy to get that data to where it needs to be. It keeps a really good audit trail of how that data is managed and how our cameras are being utilized. And then we're required by statute and by our policy to have a third party or outside entity do a biannual audit of our usage of the cameras and of our policy and of our usage of the data every two years. So we just, we got them in twenty, we got the cameras in twenty nineteen. We just had our first biannual audit in the summer of two thousand twenty-one and worked with an independent firm, law firm. I can't remember the name off the top of my head, to be honest with you, but, you know, they were very happy with how our program was going. And because of that, evidence.com is a big part of that. It just, it, it keeps that audit trail. So, you know, anytime anybody views a video, it timestamps and puts a name on that. Who viewed, viewed that video? And you have to put in a reason why you viewed that video. Or if that video is shared data with other agencies or with another entity like a prosecutor, that's all kept a record of within evidence.com. So it traces who's utilizing that video, who's viewing that video, and then the reasons why. So.
You had mentioned it was thirteen dollars, I don't remember who you got you.
Yeah. I don't want to give you a number off the top of my head and be wrong. I can get, I can get you that information if you want it, if you want the specific information. But I, if I recall, I can give you a ballpark. I think that for the fleet system, it's around forty-five hundred dollars a year. And then I think for our body cam program, it's right around the four thousand dollar mark as well annually. But again, I'm ball parking that, but Mark, I can, if you want the specific numbers, I can get you the specific numbers for sure.
One other thing I'll note that you didn't, you didn't mention is that, that evidence.com has the ability for the police department to send somebody a link. So if they took a video on their phone, they can then upload it directly into our system.
I did need to show that, that's right.
And then it's all timestamped, so you can almost look at everything in sequence and pull up, you know, four videos all at once.
What Jasper's talking about is. So obviously, everybody has a cell phone nowadays, and they're capturing video of us, video of things that happen. So if, if there were to be an incident anywhere in town that we were investigating, and I was aware, for example, that Marvin had a video of that, that he was willing to share with the police department, I can go into evidence.com and go to citizen evidence and invite an individual. So I can enter the ICR number or ID for that case file, and I can categorize it, and then I can pick a delivery method. So if I put a text message in here, I could put Marvin's phone number in here and his name and information, date of birth, everything, and hit submit. And it would send Marvin a text message to his device with a link that he can click on and upload his video to, to share with me. And that makes video and data sharing a lot easier for us because, you know, there's, there's a lot of privacy concerns that go along with smartphones. And it, people are obviously very apprehensive to hand their smartphone over to us so we can retain that evidence or retain that video. This way, we can still get that evidence without taking their phone from them and going through the process of drafting a search warrant, things like that. So it helps us a lot in that aspect. So that is a helpful tool that we have used quite a few times and have gotten some valuable information from. Yeah. Okay, so that's evidence.com or cameras. Next, I just want to touch on Lexi Poll. So previously, the Leesour Police Department, well, let me give you a background on policies first here, maybe I'll go to the post board so I can show you. So every law enforcement agency is mandated by the Minnesota Post Board to maintain a law enforcement specific policy manual. And there are, I think, like sixteen policies that the post board mandates that everybody have, every law enforcement agency has in their policy manual. What's going on there?
If you go to advanced. Yeah, right there. Go down a little bit. Proceed, yeah.
Okay, so I can go here to model policies. This is the post board website or the police officer standards and training website. So all of these model policies here, okay, you see there's eight, there's eighteen model policies. And these are all policies that the post board mandates by legislation and by statute that every law enforcement has in Minnesota on their records. So up until now, I'm just going to run up here and grab this. This is about a policy manual. It basically consists of all of these model policies from the post board, just slightly edited to say Leesour Police Department, wherever it says Agency Office, right? So we have traditionally just kept this paper manual. You know, we have at any given time sixteen or so officers that are operating in the Leesour Police Department with sixteen paper manuals floating around. And the challenge with that is this has to be updated quite regularly to follow legislation, police reform, changes from the post board rules, things like that. And I know sixteen doesn't seem like a lot, but it can be pretty challenging to make sure that all sixteen paper manuals have the same, exact same policy in it. And that the officers are aware that the policy has changed or have reviewed it. So typically, we issue this policy manual whenever someone is newly hired, they're given a policy manual, they sign off that they have received the manual and that they acknowledge the policies within the manual. And then from there, anytime a update would come in, we'd print the updates off, we'd put one in each officer's mailbox and just expect that they were putting that in their policy manual and keeping it, keeping it current. While we found that there can be some struggles with that, making sure that it's always current or always has the right data in it. And police policy is, it's rapidly changing, especially now when it comes to use of force, de-escalation, mandated policies on eyewitness identification procedures or missing persons, things like that are always getting updated. So we kind of started to explore policy options that could help us keep our policy manual up to date and complete. The other issue with just having these bare minimum eighteen policies is even though we're not mandated to have a policy on something, doesn't mean that we shouldn't have a policy on it. Like, if you look through here, there's no mandate that we have a model policy, say, on like a critical incident or an officer involved shooting. And there isn't a policy in this paper manual or hasn't been one on that topic. But I always felt like there should be. So when we explored options, I spoke with lots of neighboring agencies, some, the sheriff's office, Montgomery, some metro area agencies, and I found that the majority of departments were utilizing this service called Lexi Poll, which is a policy and procedure company that, it's a nationwide company, but they do policy specific for police departments, law enforcement agencies in each individual state. So they have operations here in Minnesota, and they provide Minnesota-specific policy. So currently, what I'm in the process of, and this is a long, lengthy process, it's not going to be done overnight. It's going to take several months at least to get through. It's, so when we signed up for Lexi Poll, I attended several trainings, online trainings about how Lexi Poll worked, the process of adopting the Lexi Poll policy. And so now I'm currently in the process of going through all of these policies that Lexi Poll provides to us and editing them to meet Leesour specific needs and, and editing them to follow the way that we do specific things as much as I can. Some of the policies, you have a lot of discretion to edit. Some of the policies, a lot of the language is state mandated or federally mandated, and there's not a lot of editing you can do with the policy. It's just the policy, and you have to accept the policy the way it is. So right now, we do have this polished, policy manual is partially issued, meaning there's some of the policies have been approved and the officers have reviewed them. Ultimately, once I get through all the chapters here and issue all the policies, the council will be given this policy manual to review and adopt and approve and sign off on that you agree with the policy manual, you want to adopt these policies as our official policy manual. It's a lot of information. I just want to point out maybe a couple of specific policies. So like use of force. This policy, this use of force policy has probably, probably in two thousand twenty-one was updated at least three to four different times regarding specific language within the policy. And that was due to the legislature kind of quickly signing police reform bills that had to do with use of. Signing police reform bills that had to do with use of force. And. This duty to intercede was a new portion of the policy and a new portion of the statute that was signed into law. So that was something that we had to get language in our policy for, and it. Basically is the policy or the statute that says anytime any law enforcement officer observes another law enforcement officer regardless of rank. Using force that is beyond which is objectively reasonable, that officer should. Intervene or intercede and report that to a supervisor as soon as possible. And then. It, there's a lot of language about deescalation, that's new. And the biggest one talks about chokeholds or chaotic control holds. Those are now considered deadly force and they're generally prohibited as any type of a control technique, barring a deadly force situation. This was a big, this was a big point of contention right here, this policy, which is deadly force application, so. When the legislature last summer adopted some of the police reform bills. They added these three bullet points to the use of deadly force statute, which is six oh nine oh six six in Minnesota statutes. And and the big change here, it doesn't seem big, but it it, they added these three pieces of language can be articulated with specificity. Is reasonably likely to occur absent at action by the officers and must be addressed through the use of deadly force without unreasonable delay. So they added this three part measure as. As a standard of measuring an officer's use of deadly force in any given situation. And this top line right here, I know it's only one, two, three, four, five words long, but it was a very contentious part of that police reform bill because. When it first came out, it said can be articulated with specificity by the officer. That was the original language that the legislature put out. And that was a big point of contention because when an officer is involved in a use of deadly force situation. They're guaranteed the same rights as any other citizen would be in that, and that's in that situation, so they have the right to not self incriminate themselves. So the reason that was such a big point of contention was because by statute now and by a lot of policy. It was mandating that the officer that was involved in that use of force or deadly force scenario had to articulate. Themselves with specific specificity, why there was a threat and a need for a deadly use of force. So in twenty twenty one, this actually flip flopped a couple of different times and now they have it where they removed the language. By the officer, so now it just says can be articulated with specificity, meaning someone else could articulate that specificity based off an investigation. The officer that was involved themselves does not necessarily need to be the one that can articulate that with specificity. So that was the big point of contention, but I I just want to point out because it it's small changes like that. That are challenging for us to manage in a paper manual like this. And this way, when updates come out, Lexi pole will push to my home screen. Policy updates right here, like there's one right here for a wellness program that they just pushed to push through, and so. As the administrator for this program, I will get notifications right here on a regular basis that will tell me. Your use of force policy has been updated and it will tell me what the updates are and why they were updated and and why I should accept those updates. And then once I accept those updates and I I push them out into the manual, each individual officer will get an email and an alert that will say. This policy has been updated in your manual, you need to go in and review it. And then they'll go review it. And then I get a report. That will show me. Who has reviewed each policy and who hasn't reviewed each policy. Where is the agency? So right now, they've, some of the officers have been in the process of reviewing and acknowledging. Policies pop up and show. I suppose it's getting melted, so I can run a report and I will get that report emailed to me that shows in a spreadsheet. Who has acknowledged the policy, what specific policy they've acknowledged, and I can also then see, okay, Officer Johnson hasn't reviewed that policy yet and I can get a hold of Officer Johnson and say. You haven't reviewed the policy, I need you to go and review the policy. The other part of this is that they're given. Daily training bulletins, and this hasn't been activated yet for our program because we're, I'm still in the process of reviewing the policies and assigning them. But once the policy manual has been built and you guys have approved it, then Lexi pole generates daily training bulletins. So that for each day of the month and each officer is sent a daily training bulletin, which will give just a real brief like scenario of a synopsis. And then it'll ask them a question about how they should respond to any given scenario based upon the policies and procedures that we have. So that's just a tool that helps keep the officers current on the policy. And helps, helps with their decision making abilities in the field when they might encounter. A situation that is low frequency, high risk. That's kind of the whole idea behind this Lexi pole is to give guidance on on incidents that are low frequency but higher risk, something we don't deal with a lot, but has a higher risk when we do deal with it. And the idea behind this policy manual is not, it's not that we want to have a policy that dictates every little move or decision an officer makes. It's that we want to have a guide and a resource available to the officers, so when they do encounter a scenario or situation. Or a call that they haven't dealt with a lot or haven't dealt with in a long time, they can refer to this. Policy manual, which is really easy to do, there's an app, they can put it on their phones or they can do it in the squad cars, on their mobile computers, they could pull up, let's say it was a missing person. They can pull up that missing person's policy, read through it real quick and make sure they got all the boxes checked off of what steps they should take or the, or how they should follow and proceed through that call. So that's the idea behind. Alexa pole policy. Any questions about that?
Anybody? Thank you, Chief Tiki, we appreciate your presentation.
No problem.
Thank you.
Going berserk here. Yeah. Thanks.
Moving on to item three B, Public Service Department update.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Kirby, members of council, we have Rich Kachara here. I know our city engineer Cory Beanfang and public works manager Scott Trader are also in attendance for this, so. Rich is going to go over, let me look here, booster station at Mayo Park, so discussion about that, the public works facility in general, and then our. Beloved compo site, so I will turn it over to Rich.
Yes, well, it's, I guess, good afternoon, it's not even, so we better keep it that way. So one of the projects I was identified in the C I P C E P is the High Zone redundant water main booster station. And after some studying, some site discussions and talking with the local, I'd say, local properties. We have come up with the site, as you see there on the, on the slide, I don't know Cory, you can, can everybody see it on your side? Okay, I know it's pretty small, but that's the site that has been chosen by staff. Obviously, we already own that property, number one. We don't have to get any easements, we don't look anywhere else. The newest thing that was just shown, and does it show it Cory?
Hundred year?
It does, so FEMA is updating their hundred year, their flood maps and on this you will see the new one hundred year flood line. And that basically puts ninety nine point five percent of Mayo Park in the flood plain. So. With this thought, this is a good, obviously another good place to put again, and Jasper left, I don't have a clicker. There he comes back. Yeah, thanks. So with this thought, we also were referring over to the post plan and looking at the post plan and seeing what, how we could integrate this into the scenery.
Thanks.
So into the environment that was approved in the post plan, so this doesn't have the building drawn in it, but I I hope you can visualize carrying it forward from the previous slide where this would fall. Obviously, this is a phase two, which obviously includes some land acquisition moving forward down the road somewhere. And that's what got our mind going, okay, what else can we do with this building, so it's not just a standalone little building that everybody says, why is it here? This is what we come up with. The main purpose of this building is a booster station, which you see on your right side. If we're building a building, what is the council's flavor? Nice word, flavor with adding bathrooms, the current bathrooms, the current facility obviously has been in the flood plain. Is not open accessible, portable restrooms are brought in there every summer, this would allow an option. To build something outside the flood plain for future. With that discussion, though, obviously comes a price tag. So the price tag, Cory, we've just done preliminary numbers, we haven't gone too far into this. Just the booster station alone, project with the water main, we're about three point one million. To add the bathrooms on right now, will probably be adder of six hundred thousand. To add the bathrooms later, which later could be next year, two years, you're going to be pushing a million dollars. Good now, you're creating a whole new project, starting everybody all over again, so. This is kind of just one of our questions for council is, you know, what's, what's the flavor? Like to see some numbers, you know, possibly as Scott is here also, he would attest. You know, if we were to put these bathrooms on, this would be a great project to put forward as a D N R grant. To get the, I call the lower portion, the rest of the park upgraded to follow the post plan. It would definitely qualify for that, so then we could move that up and apply for grants. And with that, we'll take questions.
And I might just add a little bit, so what kind of start to appear, our curiosity is when you look at the post plan, they had the hundred year identified as about half Mayo Park and so. Initially, you know, Mayo Park really wasn't our target for this booster, we were looking at securing an easement. More on the by meter side of the property, that's comparable to the booster on the other side, it's in an easement today on the, on the west side of their north side of one sixty nine. We got to think it a little bit more, it's like just a pretty substantial piece of infrastructure, there's maybe some value in having it on city owned property for going easement, there's also some challenges on that. By meter side, we have an overhead electric and just, they have some future, you know, potential uses for their sites for like, oof, it might be as best that I'm on a piece of property we can control. But understanding there is the flood, the flood risk, the flood, you know, the identified flood plane. So this post plan, we wanted just to ensure that that line was was accurately depicted and this plan, it looks great, like we're on the east side of the site, we're outside of it. We're aware of some updating that's happening with the firm maps, the flood, flood insurance rate mapping. And so we did go through and we were able to, you know, the best that we believe modeled these, these updated. You know, mappings and that is, as Rich indicated, we're going to be fully within the flood plain, but then our intent is to build above that. So we would elevate the structure, we're actually going to be striving for the five hundred year, it's a fill of about three or four feet kind of in this area, but. Obviously openness, grass park, right, we can do some grading to accommodate that, so. I just wanted to make sure that we, you know, we're communicating that we don't intend the structure to flood. But aware that, you know, some of the uses of the park is, has the potential to be compromised in in those high flood events. And then just as we're all understanding, Forest Parish constantly getting higher in elevation, so you know, as Rich goes back to that kind of longer term. You know, phase two post expansion, you know, we would expect in everything east of there that would be elevated and outside the flood, so I think there would be. True, you know, a flood time use, so to speak, but it would require, obviously, you know, continuing to go up the hill. And the booster would kind of be right at that, right at that line, it'd be out of the water, you know, at least in those five hundred year events, so. Just wanted to provide clarity in there, we we wouldn't expect this to, you know, be inaccessible or underwater. For 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 anything a match in a five hundred year event.
Can you be a little more clear with me if you're talking about these bathrooms, would they be part of the booster, would they be this in the same building then?
That is correct, they'd be part of the same building, they would be facing, I would call it west, towards the trails. And then the booster station be on the east side, so that way they can connect to the trail for eighty eight connectivity. To also assist us future grant opportunities.
Yeah, if I may, Rich, I think, Mr. Mayor, you know, what we're identifying here is we're, we're, we're building a structure already in in a location that could, it could by debate have multiple purpose, we understand. The booster is really being driven by, we want a redundant water line up Forest Parish, so the, the park is is a good site to locate the booster for the purpose of redundancy. There's a thought though, as we're constructing the structure, maybe there's another use that could add value to really the definition of this area being a park, Mayo Park. And then there's some efficiencies, you know, really being driven by the booster needs sanitary sewer, so we do have to run sanitary sewer to that. The booster needs, you know, you know, potable water, we do have the warm potable water, there'll be a hose sticking inside that would just, you know, fill buckets and clean, so. In in reasonableness, we're doing the same plumbing work that a bathroom shower structure would require. And and in fairness, we're already constructing a structure on footings and that has doors and windows, and so do you just build a little bit bigger of a structure? And accommodate kind of this dual purpose and really be a, you know, maybe a trigger point for more focus at the park, as Rich indicated, more D N R grant, so. Really, I think, in fairness, it's just, you know, I I guess openness to this idea of do we do a little bit more here and maybe provide more value in a way outside of what the original project was, just a booster and water.
And you mentioned there is some, some grant money or some resources that would help with the booster?
Not, not with the booster itself, but if we have these bathrooms, it would aid us in applying for D N R grants to redo, whoops, sorry. The park, start the Mayo Park process of following the concept plan.
It'd be, it'd be like, you know, we are applying for that D N R grant Legion Park, this would be, this would be a a a place to show that there, it'd be like the catalyst to have additional. You know, additional development, it'd be a, a place where the D N R could say, okay, you know, the advance, advancement improvement of this park. We've started now, we have a bathroom accommodation, shower for those camp sites, so it'd be really kind of the first cog to have this be a focus of, of, you know, of.
So it it makes it a little more appealing with your D N R.
Makes it more competitive, how's that for fumbling words, it makes it more competitive in the thought that, you know, there there's, there's a, an attraction and 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 really an amenity to this space now that. That isn't currently there.
Man. Gentlemen. I think we're making some assumptions that we know something that we don't know, or the public doesn't. Why don't you first of all define post, just to be clear?
Post is the parks, open spaces and trails master plan.
Correct.
Thank you.
Now, what is this, what are you talking about with the campground, where did that come from?
If you look in the concept too, you'll see there's campsites for RVs and in in the gray area, there's primitive sites. So in part, I would call phase one, there is a few primitive sites set up for camping.
Have we in any way adopted that or is that a concept at this point?
This, these are still concepts.
Thank you. Please, it, what I'm seeing up there isn't real clear, the green and the gray, what are the, what are those two?
The green would be what is constructed and developed in phase two of the project, phase one would be the gray area.
Okay.
Because we act, we own phase one property, we do not own the phase two green property.
I'm going to continue on. Again, the water main booster, more of a basic question, why do we need that, what's its purpose?
The water main booster is needed as a backup to redundant redundancy of the Dopey. Dopey lane water main, if you remember, I believe it was two and a half years ago, we, in the winter, we had a water main break going up there and we, we had to. Put everybody on notice and shut them down for a day, we got lucky. This would be a redundant, so we full, fully isolated redundancy, so that means is. Both booster stations, this, the new one plus the existing are fed from different water mains. So if one water main were to break, the one. So if one water main were to break, the one running under 169. This facility could still run pump water up Forest Prairie Road and keep everybody in business and everybody is supplied with potable water.
So it would cross somewhere up on the top of the hill?
Yes, there's already a crossing. I don't remember the name of the street.
Cambraff.
Cambraff, there it is.
Okay. What thought, if any, has gone into the need to maintain, clean, keep up bathrooms and showers should we put them in? What does that, what does that mean? I mean, there's got to be somebody that has to do that. I'm not sure what. What the thought is.
Yeah, currently, well, it falls under Scott's department for public works.
Right.
To take care of and do, they would do that as part of their daily rounds in the sea, in the open season, we call it. And then on the weekends, they also have weekend people that come in and water flowers and check the. The rental facilities, which this would be another one. It would be part of their daily grounds.
Let's be clear, rental, another key word. There's some concept out there at least that this would be, there'd be a charge for using the campground. Is that what you're saying?
Correct. Through the rec best software at the recreation at the community center, that does have a full suite to take on reservation process like this. And then we, with the bathrooms, we would look at putting an RFID system in that could run through your phone. And then you could just hold your phone up to get access to unlock the bathroom doors.
That that's another question I would have because anytime you have an open bathroom even facility without showers, there's always the issue. People getting in vandalism, homeless people, whatever might happen. Okay, thank you. I have nothing further. Thank you.
Anybody else?
If I may, so I think what what really rich you're looking for is just a little direction on is this something that. Should be considered to be added to the project. You know, we're we're kind of doing two separate, two separate things of two separate areas. One of them's the water project that we're receiving, I believe, PFA funding for. And this is an add on that would work with on our park system, right? So kind of two different groups working together. You know, kind of completing or starting the the process of of developing Mayo Park. You know, our current shelter is in pretty rough shape bathrooms are, you know, porta potties now. So. Is that, you know, it's something that we could do is, I don't know, like an additive alternate to the bidding schedule to see what we get for for bid prices and then. You know, or if it's just something completely off base, we don't even have to include it in in that sense. So. If there's any direction or comments on that, that would help provide a little direction to this group to to see how to proceed.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. One other quick question. You mentioned trails. In the past, we've talked about having trails that are part of a Minnesota system. Is that what you're referring to? So this in some way might be linked to a trail from St. Peter or Henderson?
No, my goal is to link this into our local trail network. Me and Corey, we did have a, we did have had that conversation with the state to try to get in the state. The topography of our area limits that because they need to follow the ADA requirements and obviously. Down in the valley, it's hard for them to, I believe the exact words, for them to get back out of the valley were the difficult problems.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may, I'll speak up, but I think it's worth exploring. I think. We don't lose anything. Well, we spent staff time and a lot of effort to find out information, but it's. It's essential for us to make good decisions. So. I would say we're moving forward with the plan to to combine the two and see what happens.
I was just going to say the same thing. I think we had to move ahead and kind of look at some prices and what this will cost. And I think it'd be a wonderful addition to our parks department and and hope everybody else kind of feels the same way. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Public Works Facility. Not very, not quite sure where council is on this, but we had a hope going that with the cost of 22 turn back. Mind that would be looking at possibly. Leaving their facility since they had no trunk highways here anymore. And but we would have the possibility of getting into that facility. Current word is that that is not a possibility. So we need to start planning internally. Currently, our facility is on three different, you know, three different parcels on Pax Street. The Public Works Facility, which is obviously by the cemetery, the bigger one. As we're plow trucks, a loader, pickups, skid loader, equipment maintenance is done there. The fuel station is the little island on the west. There's two cold storage sheds there. One is used by electric to store electric items that they don't want out in their yard. The other one is used by Public Works and is full of more equipment, vehicles and trailers and stuff like that. Across the street in the Parks Facility, that's where a street sweeper is, the water truck, the other loader that's getting traded in for the rubber tire back hole. All of the lawnmowers and attachments are over there, the pickups. Then there's a salt and sand shed, which is further to the east. There's a dirt bunker and a mulch bunker over there. I'm sure you've seen the millings that are currently stored at the compost site and that's just because we don't have room down here for everything. In 2016, there was a facility condition assessment completed by LSE and Dulce and Associates and Wendell. Many deficiencies were identified in both buildings. If you want, I can give you that information. I'm not going to go too in depth on that. So the current building right now, current public works is 7,500 square feet. They have two mezzanines in there. One is 2,200 square feet, one is 300 square feet. The current parks building across the road is 4,700 square feet. And then their cold storage shed at the main site, I call it, is 1,500. So just throwing out potential concepts, thinking outside a box, throwing something on paper to look at because it's easier to look at pictures and to look at words. This is something we we threw together. As you see on there, the facility is around 20,000 square feet. That's what, like I said, staff is just kind of come and put together. You know, we have we done a thorough study of size and needs and all that good stuff? No, we haven't. But this is just to get the ball rolling and start moving forward. Obviously, this is right on the compost site that we have now, which is just over two acres. So that is another item. This also kind. There's also planning here for a future water building and a future water building would just be offices and a small garage for their equipment, small shop area. This is, that is many years away, but it makes sense to save it for there as their water plant, one of the water plants is there. In the back, you see future electric building. The potential if electric division grows, gets more services, gets more equipment, they they are already full also. So the other thing is we don't own the land where that future equipment, future electric building is spotted. So just trying to work with what we have here, get some ideas to move forward. So as we're kind of thinking about this, obviously, we go back to location, you know, city doesn't have a lot of open land. This, there's, we we know we need at least two and a half acres. That's the minimum right there for the compost site. Building type, I mean, we all know there's different building types. The code tells us we can't have a pole shed. But that's all the code tells us so far. So that's a decision that we need to move forward. The cost, how are you going to pay for it? Another thing we got to think about yet, other city needs, you know, police department, do they have any needs? Fire department, do they have any needs? Other divisions, public service, we also got the community center study going on right now. What are all those needs and how do they play into this? So.
Rich?
Yes.
Who, where you got the future electrical building? Who owns that property?
Seneca? Yes, Seneca.
The Seneca.
Yes. So what we're here saying is, we think, we believe and we recommend, whoops, but.
Or Genesis.
Yeah, Genesis.
It's egg partners, yeah.
Yeah. We think it's time to get, we're going to have to get this ball rolling. Obviously, like I said at the beginning, we were really hoping on the mid dot facility so you wouldn't have to go down this road. But we we really need to, I believe we need to start going down this road, looking for council input. As as to starting the plans, you know, not hard paper plans, but start getting the brain rolling. Building a team, internal team to start looking at options and designs and all the good stuff that it's needed.
If I may add, I think. Once the weather kind of turns, I know we've had conversations with some of our newer council members. About doing a tour of our facilities too, it might make sense to to get out there. And actually, if you haven't been to the the Public Works Building or the Parks Building, you can really kind of look at it. The report Rich referenced, I believe that was from 2017 or 26, 2016. So it's 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 been, it was one of the first things I think Janelle gave me when I came in here as Public Services Director. But it was a facility study. If you're not familiar with that, we can, we could, should probably send it out to the group just to kind of let people know what that facility study came up with. As far as some of the the challenges that we have with our current facilities. But I think really going out and looking at the building and seeing what kind of shape some of these things are in. Will kind of give you a good feel of, you know, we have to either do something, you know, invest heavily in these old buildings or look at something, you know, in a different site with a with a newer building. So. You know, I think i- if there could be a coordination to to get the tour rolling, maybe late spring, early summer. That would, that would kind of get the ball rolling to kind of let let everybody know what kind of condition where these buildings are in, if you're not familiar with it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'm jumping way ahead here and I'm just thinking. One of the issues we're going to talk about later, one of the potential things to do is to talk about sustainability in the city. If we were to get rid of these older buildings and have these newer structures. In general, what would that do for energy costs for heating, electric maintenance? Are we, are we going to get some advantage? I realize we're, we're talking big bucks to do it. But is there some payback for it that we that we ultimately get for being able to provide services to our citizens at a lesser cost?
There will definitely be heat savings, gas savings. Scott, if you'd like to chime in, what you paid a month over the winter, do you remember? Yeah. But there, and that's in the report, the insulation is poor at best in the building. They're very. The the heaters run pretty much nonstop all winter, both buildings. So that way, lighting wise, they've all been converted to LED. I mean, there's not much lighting, you know, power to save that way. But definitely with the heating. You know, and I would, I would say you'd still save on electricity by having everything in one area instead of spread all across.
What year was that building built, you know?
Doesn't, it does not say.
What about staff efficiency in terms of people being able to relate to each other if you have a common facility?
Yes, that's another thing, staff efficiencies. Me and Scott were talking about that yesterday is, well, we need to go get this. Well, that's over there today. That, you know, and that's out there on back 40 today. You know, it's, it's, it's not efficient, it's not effective, but it works. And that's what they've had to work with. So that's what they make it work with. So. And I know it was two years ago. We had to replace about three heaters in that's in that shop building. So it. Yeah. They're both do. So.
Where would you relocate the compost facility?
To a site much bigger.
Not by the river. Thank you.
Correct. And not in the heart of a potential development area.
As long as you don't use the green space and green acres, I'm okay with it, just so you know.
No. Nope.
Joe doesn't care anymore. He moved out of the neighborhood.
But yeah, that that is, that is definitely our next subject to get to, even if the building doesn't go on that site, we we need to discuss the compost site. But. Yeah, if there's nothing, nothing more, no other questions, I mean, we will start working internally and work with Joe to see where he can find it in the capital planning process.
Thank you. Any other questions for Director Kachara? City Engineer Corey Beamfang, nothing.
And the compost site, as we were just talking, this is 2.9 acres. Scott's handy camera work there on the sides, what it looked like a couple of days ago. So we all know it takes the yard waste, it takes garden materials, brush and product storage is what we have, what we're trying to turn back into compost. Currently, we annually have to hire a contractor to come in and grind and remove all the haul out all the brush materials. Last year was $6,000. It is an annual thing that we have to do now because we are getting that much materials. Emerald Ashford is, if it's not in our city. It's at our doorstep that it will increase this quantity for us, increase our cost. To create good compost, we need at least three years of materials. So we need room to put that material in. When it's done after the three years, need to run it through a screener, make a finished area pile for the public to use. Me and Scott, I think Corey has been on board a little bit. But we've kind of panned out, we need about 10 acres. Obviously, 10 acres cost money. Do we have 10 acres picked out? No, we don't. But. Again, looking for council input, they believe this is something we need to move forward with.
If I could, please, just kind of facilitate a little discussion here. Is it safe to say everybody on council supports the the compost? I think it thinks it's an asset to the community. We want to keep it, right? I think I think that's the general consensus. It's heavily used by the public. It's just challenging to manage because. Yeah, I think everybody knows the history. It was down by the the river. That became flooded for a period of years. Then we moved it up on the Bowright. Not the most ideal site, but we kind of had to think on the fly to find a place that the city owned that we could move it to. Now we're talking about moving it somewhere to a permanent location. Which might take some investment. There are some, I believe, grants, maybe, I don't know, maybe not.
There are grants that they're very small, but you do need to, I call it, increase your thoughts of what you will be doing.
Yeah. Do you, do you have some thoughts somewhere you could possibly move it to?
Further towards an edge of town.
Well, we own, we own land by the airport that we just rented.
Yep, the farm field.
Yeah.
I I just, I'd rather not put it there in case a fire were to start in it.
What happened to our contract? I thought we had one with the Midwakaton Sioux for some of this.
Yes, that's our contractor.
Oh, okay.
They know.
We're paying them.
We're paying them. They no longer do it for free because they're in product, they're, the company that took their end product no longer wants it. So they have to dispose of it.
It seems like lately, and now I'm going to get a little personal, that the compost, since the water tower went in, is is getting closer and closer to the doorstep of the Catholic cemetery there. Is there anything we can do this summer to utilize some of the other space we have and move it back and away from there?
Yep.
Why, once it gets dry, of course, I know it's quite wet now, but it it's right at the doorstep of the.
Yeah, and that's just example number one, and we don't have enough room. That's 2.9.
I'm off, I'm, I think I'm all for, and I'm in favor of relocating. I guess the million dollar question is where?
That that is the the biggest question. Um, I know that Public Works Manager Schrader has had success in another city. Using compost sites to generate some revenue through some license agreements with contractors and things of that nature. So, you know, right now. We don't generate any income revenue from our compost site. It's just kind of a free service that we provide. So. There's some potential there, but then, you know, as it grows and scales up, you might have to look at having somebody. Be at the compost sites. You're not getting things like sinks and whole trees and all kinds of garbage brought there, couches, you know, those things happen pretty regularly. And become a challenge for our group to to manage. So that's something, you know, a business model for the the compost site is something that should be looked at. Now, it's not going to cover the cost of 10 acres of land, but you know, it'll, it'll, it should help cover some of. Uh, help cover some of the operations um over time, or a portion of them, so. Uh, but yeah, really, I think what we're looking for is this direction, are we, are we, are we headed in the right direction to continue to have a compost site in La Sure? And if the, i- it seems like that, the answer is yes, we we do want to continue to do this. That means staff will will try to find a site and and continue a discussion about where this potentially could be in the future. And come up with some ideas for city council to to evaluate, maybe um in the future, in the near future.
Most of that compost we have out there, that isn't all residential, there's some commercial stuff that comes out there.
It is supposed to be all residential. Yes.
Thank you. Why, yeah, I think we ought to move forward and try to explore some other avenues and other places where we could. Put the compost pile, we we want to make it convenient for the people of La Sure, but yet. Um, that that brings up a challenge to get ten acres, right, real close to town, I'm sure.
So, if anybody has any ideas, just send them our way, so. Alright, I think that's all we got. That's all we have.
Is that it?
Questions?
Okay, I have none, anybody else? Thank you, Director Kachara, Mr. Bean Feng, thank you.
Alright, we we are about uh, I guess fifteen minutes or so ahead of schedule, so we'll keep trucking along, we do have pizza coming. Uh, probably around five twenty today, uh there are some snacks, there are uh like, so, there's some Coke. Cherry Coke, um some bubblers in the back, if anybody's thirsty, just kind of give me a signal or let me know, we can grab some for you, but. Um, and some candy, yeah, if anybody's thirsty, just let Joe know, he's very, he's a very helpful person.
Moving ahead or?
Yeah, we're moving ahead now, we have, um, yeah, go ahead.
Alright, moving on to uh our communication, HR Director, Ms. Lawrence, want to give us an update?
Hi, everyone, anything, candy? Alright. Good afternoon, Mayor Kirby, members of city council. Uh, so, moving on to communications and HR, um, so today. Um, my portion's going to center on uh human resources. And from there, we're going to focus on two, no, let's say, um, focus on two areas. Um, so, the first one being job description scoring and wage determinations. Second being um our hiring process and applicant scoring and interviews, so we thought this was kind of timely, considering. You know, the city administrator hire, and we also have six other uh current uh. Job postings up, um, so I just wanted to provide everybody an overview, and if you have any questions along the process, please just. Stop me or we can chat um at the end. So, first item is a job description scoring and wage determinations. So, the first uh step, I guess you'd say in this process. Is the creation of our job descriptions or our review of current job descriptions, so anytime we have an opening, um. Regardless of what that might be, uh, we go ahead and review the job description that's current. Um, we provide that to supervisors, managers, department heads, ultimately the city administrator, and we just. Kind of dissect it and make sure it still is um meeting that our needs, we want to be responsive um. To our departments and the city, the city needs, so we'll take a kind of cursory look over those, or they're created from scratch if if needed. So, that's kind of the background of job descriptions, and all of our job descriptions uh look the same, you know, we have a template that has. Um, the legal requirements that we need, um. And then otherwise, they're all kind of, they all look the same and have the same format. Um, the next step in that process is the job description is sent to ABDO, or you guys might be familiar with them as AEM. Um, for scoring, so um what they will do. Um, is take that job description and they will score it based on the content of the job description, so. ABDO uses a derivative of the hay methodology, there are several methodologies for scoring um job descriptions. Um, they use the hay method and that has three main categories, I guess you'd call it, or distinct factors when they score them. Which are know-how, problem-solving, accountability, and then ABDO has their own kind of little section um called special conditions. And then if there are any employees that need to be supervised, they take into account the number of direct reports or people that. Um, this position would supervise, so this example is um one of our more more current postings, um that has now been filled. But uh this was for the Public Services Technician and the Deputy City Clerk, so we email ABDO. They um send this back to us and they say, hey, okay, this is what um we determined that. Uh, the points are for this position, so this position, for example, came in at two seventeen. So after we get that back from ABDO, uh the position is earned, uh inserted into the classification grade scale based off of its total points. So you'll see here, um, and I'm sure you guys have all seen this before, but this is the twenty twenty-two City of La Sure play, pay plan. Um, so, the position that we just looked at, for example, was two hundred and seventeen points, and that fits in at that grade seven. And then it gives you a minimum wage and a maximum wage, so anytime we do a job posting. I'll kind of put in bold who the supervisor is, what department it belongs to, and the salary or wage range based off of. Points and the grade that this job um falls into, and so then the wage is determined by the adopted pay scale. Hang on just a second, okay, so, um. And then essentially, like I said, we have, we have those those details listed, and then there can be um. You know, depending on qualifications where a candidate might fall, we can determine where they fall in that range based off their experience and things like that. Um, so essentially, that's job description scoring and wage determination, does anybody have any comments or questions? On this process or anything to add?
Anybody? I don't think so.
Alright. I do, and I had it on here and I took it off, I have, I have, or we have a spreadsheet that lists. Every job and where they fit in every grade, every full-time position. Yeah, I'd love to send that to you, yes, I'm sorry, I had it in there, um, I'll send that to the group, absolutely. Okay. Moving right along. Okay, our next area of focus is um. The hiring process, this includes applicant scoring and interviews. So, this is a snapshot, I, I didn't take a screenshot of our. Current openings, um because I didn't want to redact any information, but this is just something that I took from Palacity, so. Um, this is the software, I think you guys are. Probably familiar with this, but Palacity is what we use for HR management and for time cards. Um, so when people apply for a job, they go to that listing, they submit their application and all of it goes right through Palacity, so. Um, Palacity has a really kind of, I would say, easy-to-use, step-by-step process for pushing people through recruiting. So this is just a Snapchat, snapshot of um how these are categorized, so applications come in. We can move them around in the process, whether they've been reviewed, we've called them, we've scheduled an interview, things like that, so that's just kind of what that. Um, Eagle Eye View looks like, I guess, so they're all stored within Palacity from there. Um, I will take this information for each position and um. They are then scored, so they're entered into, we have um a scoring spreadsheet. Um, they're housed within, and it just an Excel spreadsheet, and we score them based off of um. Let's go to this next one, based off of qualifications that are required for the job, so we'll jump ahead here and then we'll jump back, so for example. This was a snapshot of the Public Services Technician and Deputy City Clerk job description on the second page. So as you can see, there's required knowledge and abilities, minimum qualifications, preferred qualifications. So, we take those major highlights, so in this example, minimum qualifications, there's two of them listed there. And preferred qualifications, so then. We assign points based off of those, so for example. Um, this is a blank spreadsheet right, right now, but under applicant, applicant names would be listed. And then for this one, the min of uh minimum qualification and the uh number one and two, both are assigned thirty points. Preferred qualification is twenty, and then we need to give veterans preference for anybody who is a veteran, um. Non-disabled or disabled, so essentially, you just go through, populate, um populate the fields, enter the applicants and assign a point total. Which gives them um some data behind it, so we can rank them. Um, so really, then we just enter that information, assign them a point total. And then they're ranked based off of where they fall into those categories, um. And then typically, what we do is you can. See where they'll fall in their rank, so we'll sort them by rank and um call those selected applicants in for interviews.
Who assigns them their point totals?
Um, it depends on what the position is, um. So, for example, Public Services Tech and Deputy City Clerk, Rich and I are sharing that position as a supervising that position, so. Rich and I scored those applicants, or whoever else considered, and Joe and I have done several together that we've had for finance analyst, so we usually. It's usually not just one person.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Yes.
So the minimum would be one, which probably doesn't happen that much, what would be the maximum that you would have do it?
So it depends, so for example, uh the Community Development Director position, I'm just going off the cuff, I'm certain that one has. Um, three minimum qualifications, so these point totals aren't static, we adjust them. So they usually equal one hundred for easy math, this is just our method of quantifying the data. Um, so typically, you're right, you wouldn't see a one, a lot of times. We're going through and they're like, okay, they have this many years' experience, so we're going to put that as a ten, but it's something collectively that we've talked about together. So it's got two set of eyes on it, or three, maybe four, does that make sense? Does that answer your question? Okay. Any other questions? In the riveting world of HR. Jasper, do you have anything you want to add?
Um, the only, the only thing is, um, you know, when we, we've talked about adding some like screening questions to some of our. Uh, applications, just things that we require that uh will help um. Create partitions between different uh levels of candidates, uh because we've run into some situations where. Some of our uh minimum qualifications for the job are easily met, and there's no way to really differentiate, so we end up getting. Uh, a bunch of candidates that score exactly the same and they're maxed out, so. Having some additional criteria is something that we've talked about that we might add to kind of create some separation between some of the, I guess, higher level candidates. Um, and it'll help us, uh, you know, possibly expedite the the process, you know. I think the, what the community service technician, customer service technician, there, I think there were fifty-four.
Four.
Fifty-four applications and um, you know, quite a few, we we had to interview quite a few of them because they were maxed out on the points. Because the minimum qualifications aren't uh are are pretty low, so. Um, but that's just something that that we might look at adding to the application process.
How many screening questions are you, would you say?
I don't know, it would be uh, you know, maybe two or three, just.
Can you give us an example of what one might be?
Well, okay, so for a customer service technician, sorry, I'm thinking this off the cuff, for example, we had people apply that would maybe have their. That would have their high school diploma or equivalent, right? Um, or sometimes their job descriptions have um a minimum requirement of a bachelor's degree. So we could change a screener question to be, what is your? What would your bachelor's degree be focused on, or um they would have to answer those in the application and then. That would show up in their screening process, so really you can tailor those to anything that you want, it could be around their education, it could be around their work history. Um, and it's really just a method to sort them, to make it easier for us. Yeah, so it really, there's, there's several things you could do with that.
Anybody else?
Alright.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Hey, Ms. Lawrence, we appreciate your time, we appreciate your presentation. Moving on to the Finance Department. Mister Joe Roby. If you're ready.
Alright. Well, thank you very much, everyone, and um Stacy thought hers was riveting, wait till you hear mine. I think it's kind of exciting, but um. So, um, I'm going to talk about a couple things here, um, the the principal topic will be debt. Um, we'll give a quick update on um our overall debt status, uh long-term debt at the end of fiscal twenty twenty-one. And then I do want to give just a quick, quick update on um. Something that I know was was brought up at probably last week's council meeting, um around some temporary support for the Finance Department. Um, in the coming months. So, keep in mind, uh please, that um we've not completed our twenty twenty-one audit yet, um which is normal. Um, the auditors will be on site the first week of May, um they'll scour the books and, you know, may make some tweaks here or there. Um, but, so this is, I would call preliminary, um pre-audit, uh twenty twenty-one financials. So for the city overall, um long-term debt balance, uh principal balance as of twelve thirty-one twenty-one. Is about thirty-two point eight million dollars. I carved out the EDA separately below because it is technically associated with the city, but they have their own debt. Um, real quickly on that, just to get it out of the way, the EDA has a, a loan through Wells Fargo. Um, from uh two thousand and ten, um, to support the Mayo Clinic and the clinic expansion that the clinic did. Uh, which was separate, but alongside the healthcare debt that the city took on in twenty ten. Um, to support the hospital addition, so because Mayo Clinic owned the clinic space, they wanted to do some expansion renovation. The EDA assisted with that through the the taking out of this debt, um of which they, they still owe one point eight million dollars. That will fall off the um, the books in twenty, after twenty thirty-two. And when I say long-term debt, there are a few different categories here, um. I'm lumping it all together just so that we kind of throw everything in, this is all of our bonded debt. So when we go out and we sell bonds uh for projects such as the Main Street Works, such as the Water Tower last year, the fire trucks and the Capitol. Us certificates uh that we sold last year for the fire trucks, I'm also including. Um, the debt for all of our utilities, uh including the PFA loan. Uh, the La Sure portion of the PFA loan for the wastewater treatment facility and the Henderson portion, which now the City of La Sure is responsible for. Following the dissolution of Murph Park, um and also our uh long-term, I call them long-term, but all of our our capital leases, okay? So, um, we, for example, our uh VAC truck, uh that wastewater is leasing currently. That I'm considering for the exercise here to be long-term debt because we do owe an obligation, there's an obligation for. The lease of that equipment, um, the other equipment that we're currently leasing, um, there. There's some uh Public Works uh and Utilities Vehicles. Um, the the big one which everyone hears familiar with are the, the, the AMI meters, our wireless meters. Uh, we're currently leasing those meters, and so I've included that debt in here as well. So it is everything that the city owes beyond this year.
And I just want to make sure everybody's familiar with uh the term, terminology and the definition of what a municipal lease is. Um, it's basically an a financing mechanism that we can use as a, as an entity that. Allows us to to finance similar to like an equipment certificate. That um we then, we're leasing it in air quotes, but we end up owning it after the end of the lease, we end up paying it for a dollar, so. And it helps with our bonding capacity, um at the time when we did some of these leases, it it made more sense to do them, um since then. The market has shifted and we have lower interest rates than what the leases are, so we've been doing equipment certificates for for. Um, it's in lieu of leasing, so, um, just so everybody's familiar with the terminology and and isn't lost. And now we're leasing it under the traditional sense of a lease, you end up giving back that thing, uh but in our case, we end up owning it at the end of the term.
Thank you for that clarification, um, so the fitness equipment is a good example that is. Thank you for that clarification. So the fitness equipment is a good example that is front and center right now because this, we just last week council or at the end of February, council approved the final disbursement for the final lease payment for the fitness equipment at the gym. We've not yet, as far as I've seen it, seen a bill for the $1 that we will get at some point in the next month or two, to be able to buy that equipment outright. So we'll get a final $1 invoice, which trusting council approves of that $1 purchase. We will then own that fitness equipment outright.
Hey, Joe.
Yeah.
Back to the EDA money.
Yes.
Or debt, I should say. Is that more of a pass through with the hospital and clinic?
That is not. So the EDA debt is not a pass through. The hospital debt is a full pass through. So the hospital pays. The hospital pays, or excuse me, there is a portion of the EDA debt that is a pass through from, from the clinic. The hospital is a 100% pass through where the hospital pays us monthly. We literally turn around and cut the check to the bank. And it was done that way because at the time it was cheaper for then interest rates were low, it was basically cheaper to borrow the money through the city and use the city's funding and borrowing mechanisms than for the hospital and clinic to do it themselves.
Right. So it's, well, I guess the bigger question is that 1.8 includes that amount.
Correct.
Pass through.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And any, you might get, yeah, you might get another entity that comes in and says, hey, we're proposing to do conduit financing to the city. They can use our bond rating, our preferred rate. That happens occasionally and then that's kind of a, we don't have a policy adopted, but generally if it has a public purpose, it's acceptable. You might see something on a smaller scale come through where I'll just, I'll use like St. Anne's Church. If they would, if there's a project that goes adjacent to them and they want to redo their parking lot, they could approach the city and say, hey, I wanna, I wanna waive my right to appeal for this project. I want you to add this to the project, but we'll pay for it all. And we can then use that and use our financing mechanism to, to, to do that project for an adjacent property. We likely won't do that, or that would be a policy decision by city council to do it for somebody else, like a business. But like a church or a cemetery or a school or something like that, generally, you know, it's, it's some sort of public purpose. You can justify it. So we haven't had that happen. Conduit financing, we've done through the, the hospital and clinic, but other than that, we don't have any other conduit financing out there.
One last question, Joe. At some point, could you get us a number on that of what responsible the city actually has of that 1.8?
Yep.
How much of it is more of the pass through?
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
And part of the, with the hospital and clinic, you know, I think, I suspect, I don't know, because I wasn't on this side of the table in 2010. But what helped it make sense was that there's, and there is still a linkage right between the city and the hospital and clinic. The city still owns the, the land that this hospital and clinic sit on. And there were some legacy agreements between the hospital and the city, going back to the 50s and 60s around, you know, ownership of property and things like that. So there was, that's a little bit more clearly defined now, but that it would have made a lot more sense in a, in a case like that. It would have been more clear cut to do conduit financing for an entity like the hospital where there, the city has already a financial stake in the long-term operation of that. The business that resides on that property that we own. So I, I decide there are several different ways we could break this out, but I thought I would make it a little bit easier by just breaking out initially between government. And I would call that everything that's non-utility, okay, and our utility debt. So utility debt just as what it's, what it sounds, it's water, wastewater, electric, stormwater, okay? And government streets and equipment, the community center, and then the, I did include the hospital debt. So looking under the 13, roughly $13 million of government debt. You know, most of this is general obligation debt, which means it's backed by the full faith of the city. Some of that, sometimes there can be a general obligation bond that has a revenue tie to it. So there's, we pledge some revenues for it to pay or service that debt. The community center is a great example of that. It's technically a revenue bond where we pledge revenues from the community center. But ultimately it's pledged by the full faith of the city to, to pay that. And I wanted to call that one out also, the, the community center, partly because it's, it's, it's a revenue bond, but but also just because, and I know I lost where I was going with the community center. Oh, because it's a great example of, of how you can pledge revenues for something, but if the revenues ultimately don't cover your, your debt service, it's, it is being backed right now and, and, and fully funded by the levy effectively. So that $3.8 million for the hospital portion itself is, is a full pass through. That's again where the, the, the city ultimately is, is obliged to, to back that bond payment, which First Farmers holds. But the hospital is, has an agreement where, whereby they fund that completely, send us the money. And then we send a check to First Farmers Emergence. And utilities, 19.8 million dollars. I would say almost all of that has some component of revenue pledging to it. So I know there've been a lot of discussions and I know personal and budget's been involved in this with, with one of the cities contractors, Shannon Sweeney, with David Drowan Associates, looking at, you know, long-term with our rate structure. What do we need our rates to be, to be able to support some of the projects that we do long-term so that we can make payments on future improvements, right? So when we're going to pledge revenues, say a portion of the water tower, portion of the water tower bond that was taken out last year, a portion of that's pledged water revenues. So that gets factored into the calculation to determine where do water rates need to be over the next five, 10, 15, 20 years to make sure that we're contributing a portion of those revenues and not just bringing the water fund down further and further into a situation that we have right now with wastewater where rates did not move for a number of years despite taking on a significant amount of debt. The rates couldn't cover, you know, enough, contribute enough revenue to, to help cover that debt. And the wastewater fund slipped into deficit. This is a very ugly slide and I apologize for this and I can.
Hey, Joe, maybe.
Yeah.
Not a fair question for you, but how typical is that debt? Is it higher, lower, about average? I mean.
So I would say.
I know that's a tough question for you.
It is. I would say it's, it's healthy. I would say the city is at a point where we can meet all the obligations that, that we had, that we need to with this debt. We've also taken on a significant amount of debt in particular with our utilities in the last two years. We took on $8 million roughly last year. Pretty close to $8 million the year before. So a lot of that debt has come in the last few years. To that point, to your question a little bit, on the right-hand side, let's just talk about the left-hand side. The left-hand side is a full breakdown of exactly what that debt looks like. And I would gladly send this out, but I wanted to show it to you first, like, just to kind of walk you through it. The top half on the left side is all of our current debt obligations as of today. Top half being our, our government general obligation and government revenue debt. And the bottom half being our utilities or primary utilities debt. So you see the, all the government debt, generally it's, it's the, the year of the issuance is listed there. And then on the right-hand side is our total principal payments that are going to be owed each year now through 2042. The last debt will fall off in 2042, the current debt that we have. You'll see a, a material shift, you know, the biggest shift coming after 2027, when the wastewater treatment facility, PFA loan falls off. 2020 is going to be a, a very great year in that respect. Where we lose 1.1, 1.2 million dollars in debt payments that year alone.
I just want to add, when we're talking about some of this debt and the strategy with it, what we try to do is have it as debt falls off. We kind of wait for debt to fall off to issue new debt if we can. So we have a pretty stable, that principal payments number, we want it to be pretty stable. If that number goes up above what, what the current year or previous year was, that means that you have to allocate more of your levy. Or you, you know, so, so we try to keep that pretty level. So what you're seeing right now at about, you know, right around $3 million or so, it fluctuates a little bit here over the next five years. You know, you'll likely, you're, you're going to issue more debt between now and then, and it'll, it'll likely be pretty close to what it is right now unless there's a, a policy change. So we're internally trying to manage that so you don't see a large tax impact or a large utility rate impact. So it's kind of stable within 5% or so, but that's, that's how we manage that internally.
And some of the reason that the number is so high now is because we got behind in some payments?
No, no, it's just we've issued debt. So, and, and it, it would be neat to throw in perspective as far as what our previous year's debt principal payments are. Yep, yeah. And then you could kind of see it's, it's fairly stable from the, from where it is. And like I said, you're going to see, you know, 2027 and beyond, you start seeing it dip off right now, but you're going to issue more debt between now and then. That will likely keep that pretty close to $3 million, unless there's a change or the ability to keep it lower. But I think it's known that you're going to be reinvesting in the wastewater treatment facility. You know, you have a lot of water infrastructure projects, you're talking about some park things, you know, you're talking about projects and doing things. That debt principal payment, you try to keep at a, at a pretty static level throughout time. So it doesn't affect, if you want to do something more, let's say something comes from the rec facilities master plan and we say, yep, we want to do something more, we want to build a new facility or put in a pool. You might see that go up, but that's a conscious decision that council would make and give direction to, to, to move that way. So it's, it's a strategy to kind of keep that as static as possible.
Can I have a clarification though? That Dave asked the question, is some of that because we didn't pay in the past, the answer is yes. It's where it is now because for years we weren't making payments. Yeah. Is that correct?
Well, not necessarily. So I think you're referring to the wastewater PFA loan. We, we were, we were going to miss a payment. We were able to renegotiate the terms of the, of the note with PFA. So we almost defaulted, but PFA allowed us to renegotiate that and, and spread that out a little bit longer, add some more time. So as far as missing payments, not necessarily the case, but we were, we were likely going to.
Okay. We weren't missing payments, but had we stuck to what we should have done in the beginning, we wouldn't be where we are now.
Correct. You, you, sorry, you'd see that, that wastewater payment falling off sooner.
Now, in the end, if you say we increased debt, let's just say we started doing that in 2028. Right now, a lot of that is because of the wastewater and that's being allocated through wastewater charges would people pay? If we were to do other things, it would have to be coming out of another income source.
Correct. Yeah.
Right. So to Jasper's point about rec facilities, the, the revenue source for a wastewater project of 10 to 15 million dollars is a rate impact. Depending on the timing of it, right? It, it may not be, you know, a rate increase if you can time it correctly with when the current debt is falling off. Rec facilities, you know, is the revenue streams for those are a lot different. It's not rate-based. It's partially with user fees and revenues and partially through levy. Tax, direct tax levy. So just to provide a quick update then on bonding projects for this year that I know we've talked about and have been presented and discussed during the budget process. And actually Rich touched on most of these already. But just from a bonding standpoint, for Casaw 36 or the, the South Main reconstruction that's moving along. We actually had some bids come in that were looking pretty favorable, which is good. What you may recall from the Casaw 22 project is because that's all managed by the county, our payment schedule for that project is a little bit wonky. So normally when we pay a contractor for a project that we've bonded for, the contractor will send us invoices periodically. For example, the water tower, the contractor building the water tower sends us periodic a payment applications for, you know, $300,000, $500,000. As they complete work, we will pay them using the funds from, from the bond that we've taken out, the bond that we've sold. With the case of the County State Aid Highway project, the county collects all of the invoices and then they hold them. And then they don't invoice us until a period later on. So the issue that, I mean, it's great because we don't have to pay right away for Casaw 36, for large portions of that project, I should say. The problem that creates is we could bond for that money right now and hold on to it. And in some respects, that seems like a good idea because, you know, interest rates are low, but we could invest it. But that creates other issues with reporting and there are things that you can and can't do with those bond proceeds while you sit on it. So when Rich and I met with Corey a few weeks ago, we discussed the possibility of waiting until later this year. I know last year at this, about this time, we were talking about maybe doing a June issuance of bonds for our portion of the South Main 36 project. Based upon the timeline of that project and when we'd anticipate receiving invoices from the county, which may not come until next year this time. That leaves us almost a year sitting on that money before we have to disperse any of it. We might instead wait until later this year. And we spoke with Shannon Sweeney about this, just kind of balancing the risk of holding money too long versus the possibility of rates increasing. And it was at that time, again, two, three weeks ago, his perspective was the risk was greater to hold on to that money and bond it, you know, and bond for it now. So that the city would be smart to wait a little bit on the issuance. That's not certainly been decided, but I just wanted to provide a quick update on that. That as of today, I'm not expecting that we will necessarily go out for a June issuance for the Casaw 36 project. That may change if we start to see, you know, a rapid increase in rates. We can however lock in earlier on a, a rate that's favorable to us. And we will be coming to the council at some point here soon with a reimbursement resolution, which for those who remember the Casaw 22 work or even the water tower and fire truck work last year, just a resolution that allows the city to reimburse itself with bond proceeds after it's received the bond fund. So you can make purchases now and then you can, when you get the bond dollars, reimburse yourself for those purchases. So if we have to do, pay for some engineering work for a project upfront, but don't have the bond proceeds yet. Equipment certificates, as Jasper said, it's just another mechanism that the city can use for, for obtaining equipment. We are looking at this in conjunction with the Casaw 36 work for some of the other, in particular utilities, CIP items that we discussed during the budget process last year. So some improvements to buildings and things like that. The thought is still that we would, for most of our utility improvements that we'd like to bond for this year, we would roll that into an issuance with the Casaw 36 work. And Forest Prairie actually goes, goes along with that, depending on the timing. Main Street Substation, so this is a saga. The Main Street Substation needs a lot of work and a lot of updating. And it's on the capital plan for 2023, at least the bulk of it. We have a fair amount booked in 2022 for electric capital work for this. And that will be issued separately. There are some benefits to the, to the way that the electric department in particular can issue debt because of its revenue streams. And so anything that's likely related to the electric utility itself, including the Main Street Substation work would be issued separately. We still look at potentially issuing that this year. The issue is that like every other industry in the country right now, parts for everything are, are delayed, not just by weeks, but in some cases, a couple of years or more. So we're going to have to watch the timeline of that project really carefully to. Um, so we're going to have to watch the timeline of that project really carefully uh to determine when we go out and borrow that money. Again, depending on when supplies, things like transformers and switches are available. Everyone else is leaving? Any? Yeah.
Before you move on to um um the interim finance staff update, um do you want to tell the council the importance of credit ratings with our city? We talked earlier about missing payments and things, which we never did. But um this becomes pretty important to the city too, doesn't it, with the, the credit rating with, with getting bonds?
It does, yeah, it, it absolutely does. Um, and what'll happen here likely in the next, um when we prepare to issue our next round um of, of bonds, is Standard and Poor's um will do a, a credit rating call. Well, they, they will call us and have a conversation, frank conversation about, you know, what's your current debt look like? We work really closely with Shannon Sweeney on that. It's, it's kind of like having a, you know, an attorney ask you questions, you provide whatever answers to exactly what they ask and, and not much more.
And that, that weighs in, that weighs in with
It does, yeah.
That we get?
Yep, it, it does. Yep, it does. And, you know, again, fortunately, the, the rates right now are still at, you know, near historic lows. And, you know, in, depending on how interest rates go and how our ratings call goes, some of you may remember a couple of years ago in late twenty twenty, I believe it was, the rating was given a negative outlook because at the time of the rating call, we were still waiting on some tax, property tax dollars to come in. And what we had to tell Standard and Poor's was, we're not sure if we're going to get these tax dollars, we can't guarantee it. We probably will, but we can't guarantee it. And they said, well, that's not good enough, so we're going to dock you on your, on your outlook. Gave us a negative outlook. Um, they're more likely to give a negative outlook than to be forgiving and change that to a positive outlook. But we'll see next time we have a conversation with them. But yes, that's also important.
All right, on to the interim finance of staff update.
Sure. So um as I mentioned, I know this was at least touched on briefly um at last week's, last Monday night's council meeting. So um when my appointment as interim city administrator begins um in early April, uh as I think everyone knows, the finance analyst who we um believed we were going to be able to hire uh to provide some support long-term uh for the department uh fell through at the last minute. And this was just around the time that Jasper was announcing, announcing his departure. So um in, instead of posting immediately for that, reposting immediately for that position, we thought we would just, you know, kind of do some hard thinking about what the next few months in the finance department look like. So uh what we've opted to do at this point is at least begin the, the process of reaching out to ABD or AEM ABD. Like in Myers, it used to be, now they're just ABD. ABD has a history here in Lesur. Jean McGann, the individual with whom I spoke last week, actually served as a part-time contracted finance director here. Um, I believe when Janelle was still city administrator, unless she was here when you were here, Jasper. She was here, okay. ABD was where actually Zach Dow came from. Um, Zach was contracted through ABD to serve as our finance director here uh before he was hired on by the city permanently. And so I reached out to ABD and asked what they might have for some resources. And actually, just about twenty minutes ago, I received their proposal. So I haven't had a chance to read through the whole thing, but effectively what I suggested is that we need finance director support um from them, at least on an interim basis uh to make it through the transition uh and decide what, you know, what the outcome is of, of uh the city administrator search and um they're able to jump right in. Uh, they're going, sounds like they're going to be able to, they're proposing, they would provide two separate individuals to kind of split the work uh based upon their current workload. Jean's team, uh from what I've heard from Jasper and uh from my interaction discussion with her last week is, her team is highly skilled, very, very competent. They provide contract finance director services for cities all over Minnesota. And um I feel very confident that the support that we receive from them um will be felt pretty instantly once they get onsite. My ideal, and what I asked ABD is I'd like to provide, I like to have someone at least onsite once a week. There is a, a fair portion of this position that could, can in theory be done remotely, but I would like someone onsite at least one day per week to interact with staff and, and be a face around the office. So I've have to read through the whole proposal uh now uh before we come to council with it. But it seems like a promising endeavor.
This question's for Jasper. How long did we use them as a resource before Zach was hired?
Um so I believe they started as soon as Janelle started or shortly after, so mid twenty fourteen. Um, so mid twenty fourteen to twenty nineteen, um we did use contracted services. And then uh from twenty nineteen, I believe March-ish is when we hired Zach uh full-time. Uh, and then Zach left, I don't even know, a year ago, a little over a year ago now. So uh but yeah, they, they, they provide good support, they're familiar with our systems, they're familiar with our financial software. They, they, they know what's going on. The biggest challenge with them is, is they also have staffing challenges. They see people turning over, same as us, uh you know, so. But I, there's no doubt that they, they're the best fit to, to roll in here and be able to help us out. You know, kind of no, no questions asked, little, very little training. Um, they're, they're familiar with their systems.
Yeah.
And then a question for you, Joe, are you, are you feeling pretty comfortable? You can, you can manage both the administrator role and then maybe help this group kind of wiggle through things as we move ahead?
Absolutely. Um, and Stacy's left, but, but we have an outstanding leadership team here um who um support each other unconditionally. And uh between the strong leadership team that we have here um and the confidence that I have um after speaking with Jean and again with Jasper's insight from their previous experience, I have no doubt um that they'll be able to hit the ground running um as soon as they start. And again, it looks like uh mid-April they'll be able to start, which is perfect timing right before the auditors come. So um as trusting this works out and the proposal looks good um and, and council's comfortable with it, um ultimately, um it'll be another face that you'll see around here, at least on a temporary basis.
Let me, Mr. Mayor. Jasper, if you could, I think, I think it's important. We have some newer council members who weren't part of the history. When we had ABD before, Zach originally was basically part-time. And then we went to, for various reasons, we went to him being full-time. I think it's important for the council to understand why we did that. You could quickly explain.
Oh, yeah. Um, so the previous, the contract, the way these contracts work is generally you have a contract finance person onsite one day a week. They work remotely as needed, uh probably up to maybe two days a week remotely. So they're, they're really only working maybe three days a week if needed. Um, the cost to have that person at that time was, I think, slightly above a hundred thousand dollars a year. So we kind of did an analysis and said, well, you know, for an additional total compensation package, you know, for another twenty thousand dollars, we basically could double the time the finance director uh would be onsite and be working for the city. Um, and we identified things that we, we thought we could do better by having more time allocated there. And it was proven that, yeah, you know, really the biggest challenge is finding a person that can do the work. Uh, obviously Zach uh could do the work, so he was a good fit. Um, but um, you know, really the, the things that we gained, um, you know, we, I don't think we would have ever, ever been able to implement a new utility billing software without a full-time finance director, right? We were able to kind of uh look at things a little bit closer with a fine-tooth comb and we, you know, before the, the market crashed, we were really managing our investment accounts better and we're earning more interest. That's kind of fallen apart now. We had our hopes and dreams of, you know, being able to earn, you know, thirty to fifty thousand dollars in interest a year on some of our um investments. Now that's five thousand dollars a year just because the market's very poor. So um but just things like that, um, you know, value added. We, we saw with, with transitioning from uh, you know, contract finance director to a full-time finance director.
Let me, let me ask you one other question. We're kind of off in the weeds in a way. But having someone here full-time such as Joe now, how does that work in terms of helping the staff get things done in general?
Yeah, it, it's very helpful, right? There's somebody in the finance department that can, you know, answer questions almost immediately if time allows. Uh, you know, it's a support position. It's kind of like our uh HR position. They support the rest of the staff here and that's the same as the finance director. I mean, we all kind of support everybody else, but really it's a direct support where, you know, maybe Rich or, you know, Scott, for example, has a budget question or needs to know a real time, hey, what's the, what's the balance in this code for my, you know, account? And they're, they're either going to get taught how to look it up on their own or, you know, the finance director can look it up. And you're kind of, you have that real-time support really is what it comes down to. And that's, you know, that's very valuable.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have none. Anybody else? Joe, that wasn't too painful. Thank you. You kind of broke it down to make it uh so we could understand it well. Thank you. I appreciate.
Yeah, I mean, overall, debt is not a bad thing, right? I mean, it allows us to do really important things.
What helps us put equity into our community?
Yeah, I mean, right, with, without the ability to bond for things, there are a lot of things we just could not do. Um, and the city's been bonding. That, that is not a bad thing. Too much debt or the wrong kind of debt is a bad thing. But maintaining, you know, maintaining a solid portfolio that, again, ultimately that we are planning for, if we're smartly planning for it, it's, it's, it's healthy for the city to have. If we're not moving forward, we're, we're moving backward and taking on some of those debt allows us to move forward.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Roby. Uh, moving on to uh goal setting, exit, do we want to take a break or what do you guys want to do?
Short break? It's a good, it's a good segue. Um, the food will be here in about probably twenty minutes or so. Um, but yeah, uh the next two things are really focused in on the goal setting, uh the evaluation of our current goal package that you see. And then kind of then transitioning into, hey, what, what are our goals going to be for twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three? So, yeah, I think now would be a logical time to, to split that up. And then maybe between um looking at our current goals and future goals, we'll be able to grab some food and then finish it up.
Sounds good. Let's take a little short bathroom break then.
You want me to introduce you, no doubt? Welcome back, everybody. We're going to finish our, our meeting today with the annual planning retreat. And at this time, we're going to have an administration update. We're going to go over some goals for the upcoming year. So at this time, I'll ask that city administrator crew will take us down that.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Kirby. The first section we're going to talk about are the goals that we've adopted. I believe we adopted them last year, March 22nd. So exactly one year ago, these were adopted. So I'm going to go through these goals. You'll see the sheet in front of you that has some yellow highlighting on it. What the yellow highlighting indicates are goals that I've identified that we potentially could remove if you would like to. As they're, as they're either done or really close to being done here in, in preparation of developing some new goals. So I'm just going to go through these again. For people that aren't familiar with the format of this document, the long-term goals, the focus areas and the strategies are all tied to the comprehensive plan, the 2040 comprehensive plan. So essentially every single goal that we adopt as a city can be tied directly somehow, some way to our comprehensive plan. And that's a good way to ensure that we're following our comp plan, where we're taking it seriously and we're using it to, to guide the direction that the city's going. So neat little table, not the prettiest, but you know, I think it gets the job done. It also identifies what the goal is, what the group lead is, and then it identifies a staff lead. So somebody that's going to either participate in a pair or, or alone to kind of drive that goal home. So um, I'm just going to start by going through this in 2021, 2022, there were 12 goals that were adopted. Um, goal one was schedule and conduct the future of the city forum in 2021. Uh, we didn't exactly do it in 2021. Uh, the pandemic had its own, uh, you know, kind of schedule here. So, but we are, we have this planned to occur and it will occur on Saturday. So uh, it will occur Q1 of 2022. That was kind of the developer, the goal that the planning commission developed. Um, so that, that's one that I'm, I'm earmarking as potentially, we can just get rid of and say it's been accomplished. When we start forming our next set of goals. Um, goal two, evaluate the feasibility of acquiring electric service territory within the city of La Sure corporate limits. So this is really looking at area that is related to Minnesota Valley Electric, oh, has the rights to electric service territory, kind of in the northern part of La Sure. Looking at that and, and Noel's been a party to this and internally, we've been working quite diligently on this and analyzing what we can and should do. And, um, you know, that, that goal is not completed yet. Uh, so it's something that we should focus on in 2022, but that's something that, that needs to be included in this, in the, in the next set of goals because it's important and we're pretty far along in the whole process already. Uh, the goal number three, establish a volunteer program. Uh, what we've done is we've acquired some volunteer management software. And really the next step with this is just really implementing that software. So and the idea is that each department could kind of come up with volunteer activities and hopefully the, the, the goal is to have a volunteer community. So you know, we have a good retirement community, uh, that potentially could do things like monitor the compost site, you know, spend some time, some hours at the, uh, the community gardens to answer questions. Yeah, you know, things like that. One of the things that's maybe a little timely is do some monitoring of sidewalks, things like that, where they're going around and self-reporting, uh, you know, some sidewalk challenges with ice and snow. So, uh, but there's a whole list of things like that, that this volunteer program, the idea is then we can get a, a group of people that sign up, say, hey, I want to be a volunteer. And then as those volunteer opportunities are added to the system, then they get an email and then we can market it and, and things like that on social media. So that's really close to being done. Um, I think that it's, it's something that you'll likely see, uh, this summer or fall, uh, be completed. Uh, and then really hopefully that, that group of people that, you know, maybe are passionate about volunteering in the community are able to, to do that and, and we can grow that. So that's one that's earmarked, uh, that we could remove. Um, develop a 10-year comprehensive capital improvement and equipment plan for the wastewater treatment facility. This is something that, um, Public Services Director Kachera gave me, uh, earlier this year or late last year. Um, so you'll see this on a, on a city council agenda here. Uh, we've been doing it in not so long of a term of 10 years, really five years, and we're doing our capital planning for budget purposes. This is kind of extends things out a little bit more past that, uh, that promised land date of 2027, uh, you know, when the bonds fall off. So we can kind of get an idea of some projects for the wastewater facility that we're going to need to do um, to really maintain that facility, uh, moving forward, which it will include some bonding. So that's something that, that's, it's basically done. And I don't know, uh, if it's going to be April or May, when that's brought forward to council to, to look at and evaluate. Uh, goal five, the transportation and utility plans, um, they've been, uh, they've been adopted. So council has adopted those, planning commission has reviewed and recommended approval. They've all been approved. The last step, which is, uh, in the mix is to add those to the, uh, 2040 comprehensive plan. Um, our, our contractor consulting planning or planner Nate Sparks is, is tasked with um, doing that. So amending, taking those plans along with some of the other plans that we have and doing a, a large scale comprehensive plan amendment. So you'll likely see appendices added to that plan, um, that include, uh, the transportation plan, the utility plan, um, extraterritorial growth, future land use, all those plans that have been adopted over the last probably 18 months to two years. And have those actually be included officially in our comprehensive plan. To give ourselves a more complete comprehensive plan. Uh, so those plans have been adopted. It's just that last step of, of getting those, uh, into the comprehensive plan. Uh, goal six, utilizing various housing studies, uh, housing study recommendations and market analysis to develop a comprehensive housing recruitment strategy. So you may or may not remember, but we did adopt a strategy, uh, prior to when Samantha DiMaggio left. That was one of the last things that she brought forward and, and got adopted. So we have one of those plans that'll be a document that the, the new, um, community development director will use as guidance to, on how we're going to attack the housing challenges that we have in La Sure. Uh, goal seven, uh, create a mayor's task force on the La Sure Community Center to assist with developing a long-term vision for the facility. Um, that has been done. I believe we've met three times, uh, this rec facilities master plan, they will be included in that. So that, that task force is fully intact and functional. Um, they'll, they'll be a part of the rec facilities master planning process. And really, once that process is done, uh, city council should evaluate when you close out that group. That's a group that is a mayor's task force. And once that task is done, um, really closing that out and, and, and kind of terminating that group. Uh, we do have the RPAC as well right now too, that kind of serves as a similar function, but um, the idea behind the task force was to get more community members involved. And that group has really grown from, I think initially we had about 10 people show up and now there's about, I think about 24 people that are on the list. So um, I think as this rec facilities plan gets more traction and people are talking about it and there's some more community engagement, you'll see, uh, that group grow because there's a lot of passionate people about the community center and rec facilities and, in the community. Um, goal eight, now this is, this is something that we should talk about a little bit. Um, develop and execute a plan to plat and market a shovel-ready shovel-ready business park lots on the EDA-owned land adjacent to 169. So the EDA land that I think everybody is aware of, um, where the water tower is. Um, that's something that has been put on hold because of some, some developments with, with Cambria. Um, as Cambria is, is talking about expanding, uh, potentially, and in order to do so, they need to do this, this land swap with Mindot with the rest area. And, um, so that's kind of in the mix right now. The EDA is actually going to be, uh, looking at this on Monday. And they're going to be, uh, I think, I believe there will be representation from Cambria because really the EDA needs to give staff direction on do we want to continue to have this purchase agreement, uh, in, in motion with Cambria? They've had it for six months or so, five months or so right now. Um, or do we want to continue with this business park model? So depending on the direction of that meeting and really what happens with, with Cambria and that site, this goal could either stay on here or go away. I would just, uh, you know, by the time you evaluate this, um, potentially in April to adopt these goals, uh, you know, there might be some more information related to that goal, um, through the EDA meeting on Monday. Goal nine, uh, adopt an electric cost of services study and evaluate the structure of account types, uh, very lengthy and detailed, uh, uh, exercise that's been completed and implemented. Uh, so that's something that we can, we can remove from here. Um, develop a fundraising campaign for the park project priority list. That's something that, that we haven't spent much time on, uh, officially developing a plan. Uh, I've done some work, uh, trying to, trying to find a group like the, it was the La Sure Community Foundation to kind of be the, the agent that we can funnel potential money through, through donations where people, that people can get full um, tax benefits through that. Um, that group kind of said, well, you know, that might take away from some of our uh, uh, other projects that we want to do because some of the city projects are so large scale, you know, inclusive playground, million dollars splash pad, that type of thing. So um, you know, some other strategies with that from our standpoint is maybe working with some of the service organizations like Lions or Rotary to, to try to, um, you know, really tax incentivize donations. Right now, if somebody wants to donate money directly to the city, I believe it's 50% tax deductible. So they don't receive a full tax deduction, but if they go through, I believe Rotary, Lions, um, those are a hundred percent tax, tax, uh, tax deductions.
Rotary would not be Lions probably are not. You have to have a separate foundation, which the Rotary Club does. I don't know about the Lions.
Okay. Yeah, those details would have to be worked. Really, we're trying to just say, hey, you know, if somebody wants to donate like, uh, to a cause, like an inclusive playground, we want them to realize that benefit, um, because, you know, taxes are important. Uh, so that's something that, that staff would work on and, and develop. Goal 11, partner with the La Sure Henderson School District to establish normal meetings. We tried this. We've tried this. I think probably we've had one official meeting with them. Uh, we've had two meetings that have been canceled. So it's something that it's a goal, but I think it should just almost be a norm. Uh, you know, it's on here, it's on the radar. I think that if we, you know, continue to try to meet, it's always challenging to meet. I think the last time we had a kind of a snowstorm, just you know, and then previous to that, any, any meeting was, was difficult because of COVID and remote meeting capabilities and things like that. So I think if it's just kind of council direction to staff is, hey, schedule a meeting every, you know, twice a year at least, and then figure out what's going on. It's very important right now because of the referendum that is potentially going to be on the ballot and making sure that city council and, and staff and the public are aware of what's, uh, you know, going to happen and how, how that plays into the city's plans and things like that. Um, you know, that's important. So you know, you could keep this goal on here because it's a good goal. Um, but it should almost just be a normal occurrence that, you know, we've identified that, that, that just, just happens. Um, so that'd be, that'd be a city council decision. Goal number 12, coordinate a celebration event to commemorate reopening of Main Street. So that's something that is planned to happen, um, this summer. So that's something that we could keep on here to make sure that, that, that occurs after the, the Main Street project is complete. So that's kind of a rundown of our current goals. A lot of them are completed. A lot of them are really close to being completed, but really, um, you know, we really look at the next set of goals. And we have some ideas from some council members or one council member has given a couple of ideas on goals. Uh, but before we go jump into the future, are there any questions about what we have here in front of us, um, and kind of the concept of, of removing some of the items that are highlighted in yellow and uh, really that would leave us with four goals and then some additional ones that you'll see on the other side that, that I've worked with staff to kind of develop and, and the council member. So any questions, comments, concerns, uh, about the goals? We do not.
I have two real quickly. Go to goal 12, you skipped that. I'm assuming that'll be done this year. Why isn't the yellow?
But it'll probably be done honestly, late summer. So things that'll, that is this year. So, and the goals are 2022, 2023. So that one could, could come or go. I just, you know, I think it, it was identified as a fairly important thing to, um, commemorate. You know, a pretty big achievement in my opinion to open reopen Main Street.
I think we should leave it there then.
Yeah.
Since, but okay, I'm going to go to goal number two. Excuse me. Number one, you have a yellow. In the comp plan, that's required to be done every year. So we should not be taking it off. It should be in the, maybe we should make it 23 because 20, we're doing it in 22. But it, it's required by strategy number eight to be an annual event. Uh, we're like the procrastinators. We meet every year, every eighth year. We have finally done it after establishing the plan in 2019 or whenever it was. But I would recommend we keep that. That's all.
Okay.
Anything else, anybody?
Thank you. If I may, Dave, I think also if the community pays any attention to this, it says that we really do want to work with the school district. That's a really important piece.
Those are great comments and yeah, um, if we would keep those two goals. Uh, if you look at the next page, we have two slots that are open and then we wouldn't have to reformat this table. Um, but that's just, that, that's all jokes aside. Um, yeah. So, well, you guys will have time to vote on this officially sometime in April, I'm guessing. So, um, if we're okay with moving on to future goals, we can kind of start talking about those a little bit. So, um, the first four goals you see on the, on this sheet, uh, the one with the gray, uh, are the ones that carry over. Um, and then if we're looking at goal one and goal 11 being in here as well. One, I'm just taking a couple of notes here. You know, that would, that would, uh, round it out to 12 goals on this sheet. So, um, I'll start with goal five and, and goal six. Those are items that, that council member Krogman had sent. You'll see two articles from the latest LMC magazine that I believe everybody gets. If you don't, um, let me know and, and, and we can make sure that you're signed up and you're on there. But goal number five i- is related to explore establishing a five-year environmental sustainability plan. So this article goes into some details about why it's important and some ideas on how cities can do that. Um, this is a pretty common practice. Uh, we do a lot, you know, in practice, we actually do some of these things already. We're just not identifying it in a plan. Um, you know, some of the things with our electric utility that we're doing are, uh, I'd say very progressive as far as renewable energy goes. Um, but really, you know, looking at some of the things that we're doing as a city when we're purchasing products, purchasing vehicles. Um, you know, we have, I would say a, a pretty robust energy conservation program. Um, just because we run our own electric utility. So, um, really looking at this, you know, you could call it anything you want. Uh, but an environmental sustainability plan is something, and this isn't saying that we're going to establish it. It's just saying that we're going to explore the establishing of it. So really an exercise that would look at, well, what is, what are some of these plans look like? Uh, maybe have a work session with city council and say, well, here's a plan that, you know, so-and-so city adopted. You know, some of these things maybe are pertinent to La Sure, but then, then developing one on our own and looking at it. Um, and it really does tie to our comprehensive plan and some of the sustainability efforts that, that are identified in, in, in that document. So um, I urge you to look at that. If you're completely against it, obviously you have the ability to, to, to move it off here. You know, when these goals are adopted, but that, that's one of them that has been requested. Um, goal number six, evaluate the city's emergency action. Um, goal number six, evaluate the city's emergency action plan and provide an updated document to city council for evaluation and consideration of adoption. Um, what we have as a city right now that's been adopted is an emergency operations. EO, EOC plan, I believe. Um, it's something their previous emergency manager, Randy Snow, developed. Um, it's something that our current emergency manager, Justin Nielsen, is revising and actually creating a digital version of, uh, the previous version was a, binder with, you know, whiting out of council members' names and phone numbers and that type of thing. So, um, kind of modernizing the plan and going through it and making sure everything, uh, were jives with what we, what we want to do. Um, you know, Ann Traxler was a big part of getting those plans, uh, to the cities. She's since retired from the county. Uh, but really it's, it's pretty well dialed in and really having, and I think that this goal really, uh, uh, a product of having it completed would be having that emergency manager, come to city council, talk about the plan, talk about, uh, situations where the city might open up the emergency operations center. Um, in all likelihood, uh, some events that you might see would be like a, a natural disaster, flooding, uh, a tornado, um, a train derailment, something like that where, uh, where we would open that up and have a, have a, a location where we could, we could do that. The other thing is our, our current EOC, I could, I, I should maybe quiz everybody, that, uh, is in the wastewater treatment facility. So in that conference room, it's all set up. There's a bunch of jacks. There's one problem that we've identified as a staff is, well, what if there's a train derailment? We can't get to it. Um, you know, the fire hall would be a, you know, looking at the locations, maybe we move it to the fire hall. It's a little bit more, um, centralized location. That's away from maybe a potential emergency. Um, city hall, I think right now is the secondary location. We have two locations. So, maybe just looking at that and having a discussion as well about, about the plan and just making sure ours is up to date. So we're ready, uh, ready if, if an emergency happens, you know, we have an emergency manager. So.
I was on the EOC.
Yep.
In case someone were having this in our community, who's entitled to the press, who, uh, where to meet, what we're allowed to say it to the council, things like this. I know it makes it recent.
Yeah, I think, yeah, it is. The last time, so Randy, I think right before he retired, I think it was 2017, he presented to city council and, went over the document and so it's updated. The last time it was officially adopted and updated was 2017. So it's, it's due and I think it's a good, good goal to have and it's, you know, the metrics are there to be able to achieve it pretty, uh, not, not easily, but it is attainable for sure.
Jasper, I, I would recommend actually updating the language on that though. Instead of emergency action plan, I would go, or emergency operations plan. You see in, in all the framework, that's actually what it's called.
Okay.
And then it breaks down into emergency action plans from there. So.
Very good.
I'm, I'm gonna say the obvious, but it doesn't have to be in here. That's what I'm trying to say. But it's important that all of us know what this plan is. Because if something does happen, you can't go, where is it? Okay.
I saw it might be.
Yeah. But the mayor needs to know what his role is, the city administrator, public works. Everybody needs to kind of know what will happen. And some of us will have no role whatsoever, but we need to know who to go to. So.
You said it's all digital though?
Um, we're just, pretty close, pretty close. Yeah, yeah.
Perhaps we can maybe email that out to council members when it's done.
Yeah, yeah. I think that there's, there should be an exercise that, yeah, draft form and then shortly after that, um, you know, officially take action to either revise it, you know, how you feel fit and then adopt it officially.
Let me, let me add something. I, we used to have emergency drills in town of a certain type with police, fire. It, it, this may be something where we need to do that part of a plan where we actually have a scenario and, and see how it works. I think it'd be really comforting to me to know that we tested it.
Yes, we did one time before. We did for the, uh, home.
Yep.
Mock, uh, emission, something through their system.
Yeah.
It caused a lot of havoc, whatever it was. And it was the city's role if you know what to do about what happens. They could drug traffic with police, those police firing, all involved.
Yeah.
We're ready to do it.
Yeah, I, if I could offer a suggestion, I would say get the plan updated in 2022. And then, um, you know, during the next goal setting session, maybe 2023, have a mock EOC opening, emergency operations center opening and, um, have the emergency manager and, and city staff and police and all those entities, uh, uh, understand what's going on and, open up the EOC, make sure we kind of know what's going on. And then, um, that'd be, that'd be a good goal for, to look at for 2023.
Or you could add to this one with an eye toward having a mock EOC opening in 2023. So you keep the focus.
Yeah, we could.
As they do the plan. I'd recommend that, by the way. Joe had something.
Can I just add something? Is that appropriate?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, what I would add is, um, and Jasper, I probably discussed this nine months ago, very, very briefly. Um, what, what would really be great, what I'd like to see, um, is not only establish a plan, um, and, and plan a mock, uh, drill of some sort. But ideally what we do is, again, the county, um, it's, it's tied into this, but through cell central, um, the cell central, um, co-op, uh, emergency services, they'll do, what they'll do is at least annually, there is a, a mock exercise that involves county, city, emergency services, um, healthcare, all throughout the region. And so they'll do basic things like they'll choose a scenario like, um, power outage, tornado, flood. And then each entity, city, healthcare, county, each has a role and you implement your plan and do things like test radios. Uh, make sure that you're, you know, you're assigning duties correctly. So each entity take their plan and then, see it unfold as part of a broader exercise to make sure that you can connect to the different jurisdictions they need to connect to. So I think having an awareness of what those drills are and when the regional drills are taking place and incorporating our plan into that, um, broader plan drill would make a lot of sense.
Let me note something too. Real quick, when you say that, you do something of that magnitude or even locally, this would be the year to begin planning to do that, not doing it. But it takes some foresight to be able to, be able to pull it off. You don't just all of a sudden snap your fingers.
No, that's great. I mean, I think, I think just having it, I think, you know, the first two things and what Joe mentioned is kind of part of the mock EOC that can all be part of, part of the same exercise. So, I have a note in here to, to open, to end, have a mock or, uh, whatever, mock EOC opening in 2023 or something like that. I'll, I'll wordsmith a little better. Uh, moving on to goal number seven, uh, a comprehensive review and update of the city of Lusor personnel policy. So this is something that has been on, Stacy and my, uh, radar for a couple of years. Um, we've worked on it. We're pretty dang close. Uh, but really it, it's quite an effort. If you can imagine, we have a personnel policy that's, you know, eighty-some pages that has a bunch of different language in there. Some of it's very, uh, antiquated, old, outdated, um, and, isn't practiced, right? So the one I always use for an example is, uh, it says that you can still, uh, if you're, if you're in a city-owned vehicle, you can smoke in that vehicle as long as you're by yourself, which, you know, we've, that policy doesn't exist. So it's still in our personnel policy. That's just the most egregious one that I could think of. Um, but so there's, there's obviously things that need to be updated. Um, we, the approach we've kind of taken over the years is just to update it as things come up, which is, okay, but we're trying to be a little bit more proactive with this. And, um, you know, some of the HR things that, that we've had, that we've had challenges with, uh, you know, they all tie to the personnel policy. That's literally what you use to, to justify any, any sort of, uh, movement, um, for your staff. So, having something in there that's a staff requested, uh, goal, you know, it's, the draft form is pretty much there, but there's a complete exercise of making sure city council knows what they're adopting. And, it's a, you know, there's more red lines than, than regular kept language in there, just, just to prepare. So that's something staff's requesting. Um, goal number eight is to review and update city code related to water, electric and you, uh, water, wastewater and electric utilities. So this is something that, um, Public Services Director Kachera has brought up. It's something that's needed. A lot of our code related to those electric, or all of those enterprise funds utilities, uh, needs to be updated. Uh, it's something that, you know, potentially could, uh, I don't know, harm the city in the future if, if we have this outdated code. So it's something that should be reviewed both by staff. Um, have our attorneys look at it to make sure it, it, uh, follows state statute and then adopt it through ordinance and implement it. There aren't really any, there isn't anything that's going to have any, uh, kind of gross effects on the public. It's just making sure that we have our butts covered in our city code by operating our utilities. So that's one, uh, staff requested one. Uh, goal nine is related to the rec facilities master plan and, and basically adding the creation of a 15-year rec facilities financial plan. So, one of the outcomes from this rec facilities master plan is to develop a financial plan that allows the, the city to provide amenities, recreation amenities to the public in a fiscally responsible manner. And having a 15-year time period implement that is, I think, probably enough time to, to do what we want. It's a long period of time. If, if you want something shorter, you can say 10 years or five years. But just know that the shorter it gets, the more expensive per year it'll get, depending on what those amenities are, which we don't know yet. So, it's a work in progress, but really just making sure that we, we keep that moving along because, you know, there's a lot of passionate people about our rec facilities in town. Uh, you know, in particular, the indoor pool, which has been closed for, for quite, for a couple of years. Now, I think roughly about two years since, uh, since we closed it in, in, or we were forced to close it in March of 2020. So, um, yeah, so it's, it's, it's an important thing that we're, that's, that's, that's going to happen, but really making sure that the, the outcome of, of a financial plan happens. So, uh, goal number 10, uh, is, uh, city council review and approval of police policies and fire department policy. So, um, Aaron Chief, uh, Tiki gave a presentation on Lexi Poll. Um, really making sure that city council is okay with one, the post board policies, which we can't really, we have to follow. But then any additional policies that our police department has that are, is included in that Lexi Poll, getting the city council to review those, sign off on them and, and say, yes, we're okay with that. We've never, I don't believe ever done that. Um, that's something that should be done, um, you know, just to kind of solidify our policies that we have within the police department. Um, and then same with the fire department. Uh, the city council has adopted, I believe it was in 2012, fire department policies. One of the exercises with the fire department policies is making sure there isn't any contradictions with our personnel policy. And that's the biggest exercise is, so there isn't redundancy and confusion. Because at the end of the day, our fire department are paid-on-call volunteer firefighters. They're city employees and they're required to sign off and, and follow the personnel policy. So, just to make sure there isn't confusion in the fire department policies and our personnel policies, making sure everything is, is okay. So, you know, what the vision is, is that our personnel policy is here and we have our police policies and our fire department policies and everything's tied together. And there's no redundancy or confusion about just the way certain things are handled. So, um, the personnel policy, fire department and police policies are all kind of tied together in one, but it's pertinent that, um, you know, we kind of do them all together, especially with the police department and, um, you know, the new software that they've got. So, and then goal 11, um, would be adding in the future of the city forum, uh, you know, and, Noel, I know you mentioned putting in 2023, you just change that to annually and it's always just there. It's perennially in the, in the goal sheet. And then the partnering with the Lusor, uh, Henderson School District, um, you know, keeping that in there as well would be goal number 12, maybe, you know, renumber them, but have them be in here. So, any feedback on, uh, the proposed goals? So goals five through 10, um, and any other additional feedback of adding in the, the two goals from the previous year that, that were kind of earmarked to be removed? Any feedback?
I think we put together a pretty good blueprint there and you have on, anyway, and I know Noel's a big help too. And, and, um, and Dave, I want to preach. I want, go ahead.
I was just gonna check all the stuff that we're taking off that was related to stuff we have to add to the comprehensive plan. Is there anything else that we're missing that we still need to get put in?
Um, as far as planning documents go, I would say not. Uh, just make sure that you, uh, update those. So like, the biggest downfall of a robust comprehensive plan is that all these plans are tied together, right? So if you do a zoning update and on one parcel somewhere, that transcends almost all of the other maps and all the other figures that you have in your, in your plan. And making sure all of that, you know, kind of meshes together. That's the thing to keep your eye on, uh, when you do things like that. So if you have, let's just say, um, the EDA land up on top of the hill, it's zoned right now, uh, light industrial. Let's say it gets zoned something else in the future because there's a different use on that parcel. And there's a zoning request and you, you change the zoning, well, you have to change the map on, you know, a bunch of different things. So making sure that gets done. And if there's any language, um, for that in the, in the verbiage, you know, making sure all of those things happen. So, uh, but as far as, um, I, my opinion is that all of the planning documents that we've done up to this point, that's about what we need. Unless you have a specific plan like our, downtown master plan is one of the plans that we would add to this. But if you have another, you know, Legion Park master plan or something, you could add that. Um, you can add things like that that get adopted, just to make sure that, that we're following it.
I'm just wondering, goal of the future of the city forum related to the comprehensive plan. I'm just wondering if we should also include in that just reviewing where we actually stand with the plan.
You know, I, I think that strategy eight in the plan says that. It says, give a status, get input, make changes.
Yep. Yeah, there's, there's very, I guess, straightforward direction as far as what the future of the city forum is, is held for. Um, and really it's, it's to, uh, gather community information and then address how you're going to.
Strategy.
Yes. Yeah. So renew, uh, to review the plan on an annual basis and facilitate a community dialogue about what has worked well and what maybe has not worked so well. This evaluation should lead to identifying a need for amendments or updating the to-do list on an annual or every other year basis. This can occur through regular survey mechanisms or through the process designed to take the pulse of the community and celebrate community accomplishments. So, you know, really it, it, it helps drive that. And, and the, the idea with this forum is that it'll be a work in progress, right? This will be our first year of doing it.
Seventy-one.
Uh, but really you have to, you have to have some sort of community survey and then address the survey and, you know, talk, you, you get to find out what's working and what's not. And, and I think we did through the community survey we did. So, um, and we're going to be talking about it on Sunday or on Saturday.
No, that's good. And all the stuff that you just mentioned on the 2022, 23 goal, do we adopt that now or do we?
You'll, you'll, uh, once we get this all formatted and in, you know, it, it'll be later. It'll be in April, um, probably either the April 11th or April 25th. One of those two.
Very good. Any other questions or comments to our city administrator? And, uh, council member Krogman, I was impressed with your reference abilities there. That was very good. Um, I've been here too long. With that, um, is there anything else you have?
No, that is it. That's all we have.
Anybody else? Anybody, anybody have anything? Go ahead.
Well, before we, we were discussing this, the treaty we're gonna have, there was a couple of things that I'm not figuring out. It was like, uh, ordinance and the nuisance ordinance.
What, um, was personnel and budget gonna come up with a recommendation for filling the council seat? Is that what my understanding was?
Oh, yeah, yes, correct. I, I believe that was the direction was have personnel and budget develop a, a plan. Um, and just, so I, I think everybody understands this. Um, the appointment would be from basically until the end of the year. Uh, it would, and then there'd be, uh, this would be on the ballot in November. So, um, trying to think, we'd probably be next week potentially for a personnel and budget committee meeting to talk that over. Um, and it doesn't have to be filled, right?
No, no, no.
I think we're being negligent if we don't fill it. We're supposed to have a certain amount of people and things happens.
Well, I think most of us have been toeing the line here for quite.
Well, I think most of us have been toeing the line here for quite some time without the other council.
We were able to do it in the past. That doesn't mean it's been continued going forward. Even if it is temporary.
Great, I. So you're gonna discuss between the three council members who are on the budget committee. Personnel budget committee.
That's.
Then you recommend to the city council and then we can debate it then, correct?
Yeah, and then vote on it then, yeah. Yeah.
Okay. I could hold my, until then, I guess.
Well, we we sure can. I mean, we can, we can discuss, we can discuss.
You wanna talk about it now, we can open it up. You wanna lead the discussion? Go ahead. Well, council member Huntington.
I'm uh stuck in the, if you can give me a reason why we should, other than what Scott just said, I guess. Uh, why we should fill it, for a person to fill it, go going, okay, so we. Uh, go through applications, I'm assuming like we did before. It takes quite a while. We cut it off and we do a interview process like we did when you got me back on, right? And then this person fills it out. If they choose to run in November, they put themselves on a ballot. They do all the stuff we do and then they can run. But we're only, but we're only allowing this person to stay until end of December. Six months.
Right. I don't think we need to do everything we did before. We have the ability to appoint. Fill the spot. It doesn't have to be in depth than it was before. Before it was a.
Interview process, right?
This is a short term.
It, you you can, and I know that there's, I think we've kind of fell into the groove of the way that we've done it where we solicit applications for about a month. Uh, city council evaluates those applications, invites a few candidates back, asks some questions. And then, you know, through a motion second and a vote, somebody potentially could get appointed. You know, that process takes probably at a minimum six weeks. So you're really looking at probably. Uh, June first appointment. So you're looking at six months. Um, so I think that's that's relevant. Um.
Seven.
Yeah, you're right, seven months, uh, if you include all of June, yes. Uh, so. Uh, you know, just keep that in mind. So you do have the right to appoint, y- you know, if the process wants to be changed, you could have it be changed. Uh, you know, I think we went over some of those options in the past and we kind of settled in on the 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 process that we've used, I think, for the last three. Appointments. So, uh, you know, but council does have the authority to appoint somebody to fill that vacancy through the end of this year.
Okay, let's go back to this appointments then. Maybe Scott has an idea of somebody, maybe the mayor has somebody, maybe I have somebody idea, that type of an appointment?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, all you need is a motion and a second and a vote and you could appoint somebody. Not, probably not tonight, but but um, at a city, at a regular agenda, uh, regular meeting, you know. That that could be done, you know, and if if four is still, you still need four council members, uh, because we're a body of seven, you need quorum. Uh, for it to pass. So.
How come we've never done it that way before?
It was longer term. This is.
I mean, it was like solicited applications and then we interviewed them.
We we've always talked about it. We've always talked about the process, uh.
I mean, I'm not opposed to that.
Yeah.
That way of doing it.
No, it's always been a a council decision as far as how, what the process is to fill the vacancy. So.
I guess the biggest question is, are we wanting to just leave it at six we have right now? I do see problems with it. There might be situations coming up that we would split a vote, I mean, split the. Three, three and get deadlocked and motion doesn't pass then. Uh, that could be a problem. Um, that's more of my concern right now is what, before we decide or not really decide. Is how we're gonna process. Do we want it opened up now or don't we want it opened up? This idea of appointment, whether it's appointment.
So, so the way I see it, we've got three ways to do this. One would be put it on the ballot in November. Two, we appoint somebody without soliciting applications and three, do like we've done before and solicit applications. And then we as a council decide on one of three or four or five people, which I I I like the least.
But my understanding is it's gotta go on the ballot either way, correct?
I think correct and then, yeah, that's correct. So I, you know, and interpreting what you just said, you could just leave it open, leave it unfilled until it's filled. On one, one of twenty twenty-three. You know, that that's an option.
If we can appoint somebody, I would be in favor of that, but it was the most awkward, painful process I've ever been involved in the way we did it to get Mark.
I agree.
Like that the last three times.
Yep.
It's always gonna be awkward.
Well, it's gonna be awkward because if one of you wants one person, one wants someone else, you're back in the same boat you were to start with. You could expedite the process by having people say they're interested, fill out an application. Maybe you have a few questions on there that are not just where you live and how old are you? I'm I'm kidding, but I mean. And we could just, without interviewing them, we could do it, or we could just expedite the process. Let me give you a couple of reasons to have somebody. Number one is we're all now picking up the slack for a seventh member for committee and other appointments that require time. So it's affecting our ability to serve where we should be doing it. Secondly, we're not having that other voice. We should have that other voice in the room representing the community. Against all of that is if you appoint somebody for a seven month term, let's say they started June one, he or she started June first. You're kind of giving them an advantage when the election comes up in November, okay? In a sp- in a sense, you are. On the other hand, you might find somebody says, I'm willing to step up. I can think of a couple of people that don't really want to serve for four years. But would be willing to serve this community on a temporary basis and give us that other voice. Okay, in a in a strange way, you could almost say to them, I'm not sure you could do this legally, we'll appoint you, but you're not gonna be, we don't want you to run. We want you just to serve your community for the next seven months, because we need your help. We feel that we need that kind of voice, we need that community involvement, and I, that may be a way to go. I'm not, I'm not saying you could probably do that. You probably couldn't restrict somebody from running again. But my point is, I I really, I agree with with Scott. We need somebody filling the position. Frankly, if we didn't want to do that, we shouldn't have removed the other member, except he could have shown up. And then we just started, again, relying on somebody that wasn't here. And I understand his reason for not being able to be here, so he stepped back, he resigned. And I think we need to to put somebody in that position. I'm not worried about the awkwardness at all of going through a process of selecting somebody. Maybe the, it's awkward because you don't like to make decisions between two good people. What a great problem. Quite frankly, and frankly, if there were five people that applied and none were any good, that's not the way to put it. None, we feel we're not gonna do the job. That we wanted to do. We don't have to pick anybody. So we we haven't lost anything. I'm done.
I I'm just concerned that we're gonna have people that are on vacation, they're gonna be out for other reasons. We may not have quorum at some meetings if we don't fill the spot. We need to have somebody in even if it's temporary. And I think we need to do it right away.
I think the urgency of it is is very important right now. Well, we need to, I think I would like to have uh a discussion of where we would uh. Open up for applications and then go for now and go from there. Not necessarily do what we did, he hired me back, but. Uh, pick someone like that out of that group or like Noel's a bit more of a. Short-term kind of thing, like a couple of questions, whatever it might be.
Is that the consensus? You guys wanna accept some applications to fill it until the end of the year?
If we're gonna do applications, I would suggest that they go to the mayor and the mayor appoint someone to, and we can get that in place by May. I I I do not want to sit through those interviews again.
I don't mind being uncomfortable in a situation.
I do.
I don't, I don't care. If if that's, if that's the way we're gonna go, I just soon let the the people decide. And we'll wait until November. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of communities that have a city council smaller than ours with larger cities. Um, so.
True, but we've got this size group we needed filled.
I I could personally go either way. I struggle with filling it. Unless we appoint somebody that's been on council before, because I think it takes and and Swanburg, you you're new. It it takes, I'm still learning and I'm, you know, four years in, five years in. But it ta- it really does take four or five months to even understand how the meetings function if you aren't familiar with the process. So I, that's where I struggle with filling it. If we don't appoint somebody that's had. Been involved in the process before, that participated in the meetings and we all sit here and look at the meetings and there are people here. So I struggle with appointing somebody.
You got something you wanna say?
If I, if I, you know, could maybe just take some of this input and, I mean, you could, you could do some, something of a, this is just a suggestion, a hybrid type. Situation where we solicit for applications, um, the mayor, it seems like uh, council member Swanburg has has brought that up. The mayor could look at those applications and see who would be the best candidate, bring that candidate forward for consideration. Uh, but the full city council could see all of the applications, right? So it'd kind of expedite the process, you'd have somebody looking at them, and then if the the council doesn't feel like that's probably the best candidate. Then they could just not vote that person in and and make a suggestion for another candidate, right? Um, that eliminates the the uh interview process, right? Uh, but it it is also expedited so that, you know, you could get somebody in here as soon as, you know, maybe the second meeting in April, uh, potentially. So. You you you, you don't, you lose the the interview, right? You lose the interview, maybe that interaction. I'm not sure uh what the consensus is about that process, but you also expedite it. And you also, the full city council gets a say in it, right? It's not just the mayor appointing somebody. Um, you know, everybody gets to see all the same applications, uh, but you know, the mayor's making a recommendation uh to to appoint somebody. Um, and I think that the input from the group is pretty clear, uh, you know, that the the help would be welcomed. You're looking for somebody with potentially some experience, you know, if they run or not in the fall, that's really up to them. We can't dictate that. So. Um, you know, that's a hybrid type model, uh, just a suggestion to think about. Um. But, you know, it does take a, take portions of uh the control of the full city council away, takes away the the interview process, which some may feel is awkward. Uh, but it, I think it would, you you'd end up with a quality candidate that could help the group out in achieving, you know, your goals as a council.
I think that's a process I recommended before, but I've met some resistance. So, um, I would be for that if if that's what you guys wanna do. If you've got other thoughts. Share them now.
I I would be against it.
There's the resistance.
The mayor should be determining who the seventh council member is. That's effectively what it becomes. I think your objection to the whole process is you don't want to vote no on anybody. Okay, I. It, we, I think we get the whole group of candidates, not in front of us and physically, but know who they are. And make a decision and expedite the process. Basically, today is what, March twenty-second? We just say that at the second meeting in April, we're gonna make a decision based on who's applied and. If we don't want any of them to be the person, we don't feel as a group that they're the, we don't get a majority vote for somebody, we don't do it.
So it, essentially in in my terms, you're saying, put it out for applications. We all see the applications, we bring it, make a motion and a vote on it.
Yeah, and somebody can make the motion first, somebody, if that doesn't pass. I'm fine with that as well.
So so just to clarify, just because we're gonna be administering this. So basically, we would. Uh, post the position, solicit applications probably until April twentieth. That would give enough time to get it out of the packet and then you would skip the interview process, the physical, you need to evaluate applications. And then from that point, council would then uh consider appointment of somebody. So it's essentially the same. Process minus the in-person interviews.
Yeah, my only concern with that is I'm not, I can't recall what's on the application, but I would want something to the effect of. Why would you, why do you want to serve in this capacity? Um, and, you know, words to that effect, something. What what do you bring to?
To the application.
The position. I don't, you have it there, Andy?
Um, I don't have it handy, but what I can do is is look at a past one and then give me a one, give me one.
I think they are, Noel. I get a question. I think they are too, but I'm trying to remember. There's something more we may want.
Okay.
But I I think we can expedite it. And if we don't get a can, a pool of candidates that we want to select, we don't do it, but at least we're trying.
I agree.
So if if you don't mind, I can read the questions that are on there. So. Uh, the question, question one, what are your qualifications, if any, for the position of city council member? Have you been involved either here in Lassure or elsewhere in any city government committees, organizations or groups? If so, in what capacity? That's the first question. Second question, what do you believe the role of serving on city council consists of? Uh, third question. Uh, what interests you specifically or in general regarding a position of serving on city council? What kind of commitment do you think this position will take? And generally speaking, what do you believe the duty is to be? Uh, fourth question, are you familiar with the city's comprehensive plan and downtown master plan? Are you aware of where you may go to acquire information regarding Lassure such as our website? Based on what you may know to this point, how is the city of Lassure proceeding? And what ideas for change would you have to make Lassure better? And that's it.
Those would be fine. Let me, let me say one last thing. I'm sorry again, but I don't want to dominate this thing, but. My experience in life tells me that there are some people that can fill out a form beautifully, just make it really look good and sound right. And when you meet him in person. And they talk about it, there's something that you know isn't right. But that's a chance we take here with this system. I think we know people in this community well enough to to be able to do that and they should be able to tell us who they are in paper. So. I'm willing to to go that route. Basically, no interviews, applications due by the twentieth of. April with a decision hopefully made on the twenty-sixth. That's where I'm coming from.
Anybody else, Mark?
I just wanted to say, that's good with me.
Everybody else? Is this something we have to vote on tonight? We don't?
I would say not. I mean, unless there's any uh objections to this, uh, this is direction given to staff on how to proceed. So. The, no official action needs to be taken, but we will, it's pretty simple to post it and and start marketing it. So.
When you post it, can you just make sure that you state that it is just filling out till. The new person is elected and fills the spot.
Yep, through twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-two and I'll, we will mention that. They 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 may, they they could, um, but then the appointment. Will potent, could potentially occur on uh April twenty-fifth. And then it could be effective immediately after that meeting. So effective April twenty-sixth.
And just to be clear, that that position is a four-year position, yet another three years on that term, but this will only go to the end of the year. Then the people will decide who will fill that position.
Correct. So, yeah, it'll only be through twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-two.
Jasper, if I understand correctly, our city attorney, Mike Corey, has rendered us that advice. He's told us that's the correct.
That is correct, yes.
Very good. And then what was the other thing, Mark, you brought up? I'm sorry.
I feel we already discussed nuisance ordinance that we have in place right now. Uh, I am, I got all the time in the world to talk about. My only concern about the nuisance ordinance. It appears that we have in place right now is all based on. Uh.
Complaints.
Complaints by a neighbor or somebody else. Uh, I would like to have, if it's possible, and I want to spend a lot of time here about this stuff. And maybe have a a small, maybe one of us or whatever, a task force kind of thing to look at that ordinance. And give suggestions to change it. I don't think it should be based on. If a neighbor is like a neighbor, they complain, tell it to hell, whatever you wanna call it, and then please get involved. I think we should have a better way of doing an ordinance other than that. Uh, a complaint by personality.
Yeah, and I apologize. I know you mentioned this to talk about and I had intentions, it just uh, yeah, didn't make, it slipped my mind. So. Um, I I think the, I think our nuisance code is is good. I think. What we're really talking about is the poli- enforcement policy that we have, because, you know, we have a choice and we can choose to either. You know, actively enforce, which we do. I'll just make it clear, our police officers are looking at things as they're driving around. Public work staff, they're out there looking at things and reporting things. Um, so it's not just neighbors, uh, but. You know, where we see the disputes are when neighbors do it, right? And that's where, you know, the police maybe get involved a little bit more. Um, I think a conversation that we could have is, you know, do we wanna more actively enforce this? Some communities have what's called a community service officer, CSO, um, that, that's what they do, along with other things, right? Uh but they're really driving around looking at nuisance uh issues and then writing those letters on behalf of the zoning administrator or the police. And then they're really that point of contact. Not saying that we need to have a C S O, but we could have something like that, you know, a more active approach to um nuisance abatement and nuisances in town, you know, sidewalks are part of that too. Uh snow removal, things like that, you know, people pushing snow into the the roads, you know, we see that quite a bit, which you're not supposed to do. But um you know, we could, it's more about, I I it's, I think our nuisance code, which we can look at too, but I think our nuisance code is pretty solid. Um it's just our enforcement policy uh in in the direction we get from this group as far as how we want to enforce. Um you know, because if we have an officer, a police officer dedicated to doing that, um it's probably we're paying somebody too much to do that job, right? But there are out there doing these things and that's where most of the, I think, I think it was last, the last retreat, we talked about this a little bit. I know you weren't at the last one, but um the police gave an update and I forget how many letters they've sent out for nuisances. It was somewhere around like four hundred. So they're sending out active letters on their own, about four hundred of them a year. Um and then generally those get a bit, you know, remedied on their own without having to go through. I can't remember the last time we actually brought an abatement order to city council. So um but I think what we're really talking about is uh our enforcement policy more than our nuisance code.
I think you're right.
You know, so um but I mean, the direction from city council and we could develop some ideas as a staff, bring them back to city council and say, hey, you know, here's what we think, you know, to more actively enforce our nuisance code. Um you know, here are some ideas that we could do and you know, there's potentially some cost to that. Uh or you know, maybe, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, an approach that would not take away from something else or not cost money. So um but you know, know that our police department's out looking at things, public works calls our police department, you know, if they if they notice things. Um and really, it's, I think, I mean, from my opinion, in the last five years or so, I've noticed things get better. I think um and maybe it's just optimism, but you know, I I think I've noticed things get a little bit better and there's less. We get less calls, like I get less calls about nuisance stuff than I did five years ago, four years ago. So but that that's not saying that if somebody was actively enforcing it, that we wouldn't find more things, right? So um it would just really be direction from city council. So I guess what I'm suggesting is we could come up with some ideas on how to more actively um you know, enforce it and probably the the Cadillac would be a a C S O. And that would be, you know, eighty thousand dollars a year to have one person that's dedicated to that, along with maybe some other things that 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 are community. Or um you know, there's consulting firms or contracted services where they're going out and they're doing it. So it's like a third party and they're just saying, hey, we're enforcing the code. And they're writing all the letters on behalf of the city, you know, that's kind of a hands-off approach, but um at the end of the day, they're following our direction. So we could, we could look at just various ways if the direction is, hey, we want to more actively uh actively enforce our nuisance code, you know?
I I think it's something we've got to examine. If if there was one thing I'm approached about a lot, whether it's downtown or at the community center people bend my ear quite a bit about some of the nuisances we do have in town and and I think we could probably take a a better approach with the city, with our community, with our staff as far as how we how we enforce this. So.
Well, and I think it's, I think it's pretty specific to certain nuisances too, for the most part.
Yeah, what, that's what I was gonna say, what exactly is our nuisance code?
Well, I mean, like there's language referring to parking on lawns. You know, you can't do that. There's nuisance.
And if we're not gonna enforce the policies that we have, then why do we have the policy?
Uh I mean, I think it's a fair statement. I I know you you go to neighboring communities where they're, they've gone through that phase of actively enforcing and they drive people out because it's either it's all or nothing. So you start enforcing things that maybe aren't that big of a deal. But they were a nuisance written into code, you know, how many years before? I mean, I can think of one that would be like, would drive me nuts, and I think it's what, three cars on your property?
Yeah, so any single family, family dwelling can only have three cars outside of their home. So um you know, we run into situations where we have four, you know, you know, it's six cars.
Yeah, and I'm not, and that's where I say, I'm not saying we shouldn't enforce stuff, but I it's a real su- t- sensitive subject because you either do all or nothing. And and that's, I think, where we hit the resistance with the sidewalks is we hit, happened to catch a few blocks of sidewalk and there were other ones that didn't get caught, so people were complaining. Do you, and that's where it's a struggle.
Yeah, um if I could suggest maybe a course of action uh here with this, you know, have this be a future agenda item to talk about. I think in the meantime, uh we can send out the nuisance code to city councils, you can kind of review it and see what types of things are on there. Um because there, there's a ton of things, um you know, everything from the parkings, the 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 car, the vehicle parking. The number one thing I think is parking on an unapproved surface, right? Has to be gravel or concrete or asphalt, people parking on the grass. We get a lot of those. Um we get a lot of grass length complaints, so you can have, your grass needs to be eight inches tall or lower. So we get a lot of those, um and we spend a lot of time abating those and the police are out there actively looking at that. Um you know, the snow removal thing, we get quite a bit of, um trying to think what else Aaron would know a lot more, because he's the one, or they're the ones that write the letters. But you know, it's those little things that, you know, we get calls about, we take care of, um but we're not actively out there, you know, looking at people's lawns, like actively.
It seems to be hard to miss those vehicles that are parked in the middle of the front lawn. And it isn't just a day or two.
Yeah, yeah, well, and yeah, and hopefully you understand the process. So when that happens, uh a letter is sent through the mail. And they have seven days to get, move that car. And if they don't, then they get another letter and they get another seven days. And then if they don't move it then, then what happens is it goes to city council. City council will issue an abatement order, which is basically requesting to get a search warrant from a judge. And then we can then access the property to then move the vehicle. So you know, you might see it, but you know, know that it's a minimum of a fourteen day process for us to actually take action. And really, it's probably more like five weeks once council can actually see it. So.
Can some of those things be changed, like like snow removal, they just simply get a fine?
Yeah, yeah. So there's certain things in our code that if it's an immediate risk to s- public safety, we can immediately abate. So snow and ice on a sidewalk, that falls into that category.
Gotcha.
Um so there's certain things, if it's safety related, then we can abate immediately. If it's not, like somebody parking on their yard, uh then it's something we have to follow this defined process for.
I think some of it too might just be getting the word out through social media as to what what the ordinance is or isn't.
So one other question for you with along this line, so seven days prompts another letter. If I'm parking my lawn, I get my first letter, I move that car. Leave ten days, go by and I park that car there again, does it start the process over?
It sure does, yeah, yep.
Yeah, so.
There's cap, that's where I say, I mean, it's essentially, it's a game. And there's pe- there's people that know the game. Yeah, so I think, you know, if you guys are all right with this, you know, sending out the nuisance code to the group and you can read that before you go to bed at night and, you know, it'll, it's, it's, there's quite a bit of stuff in there. So but then have a future agenda item where we're looking at, you know, what, do we want to change our policy on how we do this and what are some options?
That sounds good. I got one last question though. What happened in the newsletter? Are we still sending that out?
Yes.
Have we not had one?
Um it do, it will, it did not make the last utility billing um for whatever reason. So it's, it's posted online. It just didn't go out.
Okay.
This mailing, so.
I got a couple of questions asking about it, so that's why I was.
Well, it's good to hear.
Online, but I, that people aren't noticing that it's not there.
No, it's good to hear people reading it. Uh but yeah, this one, for yeah, for whatever reason, NISC sent the bill out, I think, a day earlier than what they were supposed to. So then we got, the the letter didn't get there in time for them to stuff it in the envelope before the bills went out.
Didn't, but those of us that get our online bill don't get it without clicking on a link. I thought we talked about having a push notification where people could be told, click here and you'll get your newsletter in a text.
We did talk about that at this point.
We did.
We we did, and it is available if you sign up for notify me on the website. I think, Noel, you're talking about through the utility billing portal. Um through through NISC, right? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, I I get a, every month I get the thing that tells me what my bill is. But I have to to find that bill, I have to do something. And am I correct that there's a link there?
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't get your newsletter.
You don't get the newsletter.
Yeah. I see Joe over there vigorously writing down notes.
My point is, either either put it in the bill where you get, when you see your bill, you click and you get the newsletter. Or you could send a push notification saying, here's a link, just click here and you'll get the newsletter.
Yeah, we can look and see if there's a way that we can send like a separate email to our utility customers who signed up for auto pay through the NISC system that's just related to the.
It's it's tremendous. I mean, look, we're talking about recruiting council member. That that, we gotta have means of communicating with the public. Let's face it, most people no longer read the La Sore County News. Okay?
They do.
Well, I do, I re- every Thursday now. I now they've improved, I get it online. Which, right there in front of me, okay? Seriously, it it does make it easier to find, but we need to be in that same mode. So.
Anything else?
Oh, real quick note, just for the public and all of you in this Minnesota news, our Minnesota Cities, League of Minnesota Cities Newsletter, our esteemed, almost to be former city administrator is quoted in the sidewalk article. Okay, so don't miss that. Breaking news.
Yeah, see if you can find it.
Thank you.
Uh yeah, and I don't, I don't, I think they may be wordsmithed that there's a lot of big words I normally don't use that I was quoted saying, so. Yeah, no, it it's good. It's in, it's kind of, it talks about Elmwood, the trail on Elmwood and how there was a little pushback about even doing it uh prior to the project. And now that it's in, people use it all the time and have nothing but good things to say about it. So.
Without anybody have anything else? I want to thank all of you council members for spending three hour or four hours and four minutes here with us tonight. I know we covered a lot, got a lot done and and I want to thank our city administrator for navigating us through that. And all our departments who showed up tonight too and gave us their their full reports. It was nice to hear from everybody. So with that said, I will entertain any motion to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Thank you, gentlemen.
So I'll be last day of the year, Tuesday. I'll be in the office on Monday.
Yeah, you've got one more council meeting with us, right? So.